Hi, everybody. Welcome to the Select Board meeting. Today is the Tuesday, the 17th of November, and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We're going to go ahead and just get right, unless anybody has any announcements or anything they'd like to start off with.
Let me read the preamble, please.
Okay, go ahead, Ed. Thanks.
You're welcome. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020, orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 18, and the governor's March 15, 2020, and March 23 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting in the Town of Southampton Select Board is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to or view this meeting while in progress may do so by going to zoom.us/join. Hit "Join a Meeting" in the top right of your screen. Type in the meeting ID of 827-0085-2220. Then enter the password 825430. Hit "Join," and please be sure to mute your device when joining in. Note, to join in video meeting with cell phone, you will need to download the Zoom app from the App Store. Call and telephone number is 646-558-8656. Or by watching Public Access TV Charter, Spectrum Channel 191. In-person attendance and public comment at Select Board meetings will be suspended before the notice. If you email a written public comment before the scheduled Select Board meeting, it will be read at that Select Board meeting. If you email a written public comment after viewing something at a live televised Select Board meeting, it will be read at the next Select Board meeting. Please send your public comments via email to selectman@townofsouthampton.org. Please note that all public comments must be within the requirements of the policy on public comments listed in the Open Time for the Public on the Select Board Agenda.
All right, thank you, Ed. Does anybody have any announcements or any words of gratitude, any gems of wisdom?
I don't have a gem of wisdom. I actually have a question. I want to make sure I'm in the right place. So I came to this meeting. They said it was a joint meeting with the Planning Board and the Select Board. But I think I'm the only Planning Board person here, right?
So far, that's accurate. We anticipate that to come up about 6:30, Dan.
Oh, okay. I just thought I was in the wrong meeting. That's why I apologize.
Is that for the EverSource meeting?
No, no, no. That's for the master plan presentation, and that's scheduled for 6:30. So I'm hoping other people will join.
How about the EverSource meeting for the pole placement on Pequot Road?
Yeah, those are the first three hearings, and I'm going to do that as soon as we get started. That's the first thing on the agenda.
Okay.
Okay. First of all, does anybody have any announcements? Anything you'd like to say? Okay, thank you. All right, there's... So therefore, we're going to start. There are three separate pole hearings, and we're going to handle them each individually as three separate hearings. So it is right now 6:06, and I will declare the first hearing open. And then I'll turn it over to Ed to read the public hearing announcement.
Sure. Town of Southampton Select Board, petition for pole and locations. The Southampton Select Board will hold a hearing at 6:00 p.m. on November 17, 2020, via remote meeting due to the COVID-19 pandemic restrictions on the petition by N-Star Electric Company, DBA EverSource Energy, and Verizon New England, Inc. requesting permission to relocate and/or install poles, wires, cables, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way. Locations: Install one jointly owned pole approximately 135 feet southwesterly of existing pole 30/16 and approximately 20 feet easterly of road center line of Pequot Road. Reason to provide electric infrastructure to a new subdivision, and this would be for Gill Farm. Wherefore, they pray that after due notice and hearing as provided by law, they be granted joint or identical locations for and permission to construct and maintain a line of poles, wires, and cables together with such sustaining and protecting fixtures as they may find necessary. Said poles to be erected substantially in accordance with the field plan herewith and made apart hereof, marked 6A031334. Also for permission to lay and maintain underground laterals, cables, and wires in the above or intersecting public ways for the purpose of making connections with such poles and buildings as each of said petitioners may desire for distributing purposes. Your petitioners agree to reserve space for one crossarm at a suitable point on each of said poles for the fire and police telephone signal wires belonging to the municipality and used by it exclusively for municipal purposes. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the matter may participate in the remote meeting at the time designated above via Zoom. Computer or smart device, video and audio, enter zoom.us/join. Phone or audio only, the phone number 646-558-8656. The meeting ID is 827-0085-2220, and the password is 825430. N-Star Electric Company, DBA EverSource Energy, and Verizon New England, Inc. And Maureen Groden, Chairman, Select Board, Town of Southampton.
Can I invite someone from EverSource or Anoverizon to speak about the pole petition and give some details? Nick, I see that you're on the call. Is that you speaking behalf of EverSource?
Good evening. Yep, I'm Nick. I'm with EverSource. I've been muted myself because I do have my one-year-old with me, and I try to keep him occupied and not distract too much. But pretty much...
Do you have video by any chance?
Sure, if you'd like.
Okay.
How's it going?
We're kid-friendly, by the way. So if your little one-year-old needs something, it's no problem. Okay, so thank you very much for speaking on behalf of this particular pole hearing. Would you like to give some details?
Sure. So there's a new subdivision, Gill Farms, on 34 Pequot Road. And in order to give that subdivision electric utility, as an engineer, the best way to do that is to put a new midspan pole at the entrance to that street from which the feed will go underground to serve that development. After going to the site multiple times, I feel that the location that I staked is the best suited and least impactful location. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Does anybody... Are there any butters here that would like to speak or ask questions? I'm not sure if somebody was trying to speak. Is somebody muted by any chance? No? Anybody from the public at all that would like to speak? Is there anybody from the Select Board that'd like to speak?
Assuming Ed has gone through the process, Randall has seen it and everything.
That is correct. He has no concerns with this one or any of the three that are here, being here tonight.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Any comments whatsoever by anyone else?
No.
Ben? Ben, could I have a motion to close the public hearing, please?
I move to close the public hearing.
All in favor, roll call.
Fishman, aye.
Fowles, aye.
Barton, aye.
Groden, aye. That's right. We're just four of us right now.
Make the motion, please.
Chris did.
Thank you.
So at this point, we need a motion then to either approve or deny the pole petition.
I'll move to approve the pole petition.
For Pequot Road? Well, actually, it's Gill Farm, however you were identifying it. I guess, what's the best way to reference this for the minute, Ed?
I would say Pequot Road for Gill Farms.
Okay.
Okay, Francine, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Fishman, aye.
Fowles, aye.
Barton, aye.
And Groden, aye. Okay, so there's a second. There's two more. So, Ed, are you all set to go?
Yeah.
I'm all set to go. Thank you. Gary, have a good evening if you leave us.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
All right, for the second one.
So second one, call the public hearing open at 6:12.
It's good to see you.
Yes.
Somebody's not muted. That's unaware that they are. Ed, would you read the second one, please?
Yes. Town of Southampton Select Board, petition for pole and locations. The Southampton Select Board will hold a hearing at 6:05 p.m. on November 17, 2020, via remote meeting due to the COVID-19 pandemic restrictions on the petition by N-Star Electric Company, DBA EverSource Energy, and Verizon New England, Inc. requesting permission to relocate and/or install poles, wires, cables, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way. Locations: Install one jointly owned pole approximately 110 feet easterly of existing pole 17/44 and approximately 18 feet northerly of road center line of former road. Reason to provide electricity to a new home. Wherefore, they pray that after due notice and hearing as provided by law, they be granted joint or identical locations for and permission to construct and maintain a line of poles, wires, and cables together with such sustaining and protecting fixtures as they may find necessary. Said poles to be erected substantially in accordance with the field plan herewith and made apart hereof, marked 6A031559. Also for permission to lay and maintain underground laterals, cables, and wires in the above or intersecting public ways for the purpose of making connections with such poles and buildings as each of said petitioners may desire for distributing purposes. Your petitioners agree to reserve space for one crossarm at a suitable point on each of said poles for the fire and police telephone signal wires belonging to the municipality and used by it exclusively for municipal purposes. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the matter may participate in the remote meeting at the time designated above via Zoom. Computer or smart device, video and audio, go to zoom.us/join. Phone, audio only, the phone number is 646-558-8656. Enter the meeting ID 827-0085-2220, and the password of 825430. N-Star Electric Company, DBA EverSource Energy, and Verizon New England, Inc. Maureen Groden, Chairman, Select Board, Town of Southampton.
Thanks. It's chairwoman, by the way. Would... Thank you, Ed. Would someone from EverSource like to speak? Nick, are you speaking on both of them or all of them?
He's muted, Ed.
Yeah, he can unmute himself.
Sorry. My permission to unmute myself was denied. Sorry, I was talking to my one-year-old. Which location is this one for?
Former Road.
This one's the former road, new house.
Very good, yeah. So new house going there. In order to give them service, I needed to install a midspan pole because the length between poles in that area is like 300 feet, and our standard is 150 feet. You know, that's the safest, most reliable build. So I determined to properly serve that house that we should install a midspan pole. And that would, you know, have the double benefit of making that pole tap more reliable and also providing service to that new customer.
Okay. Is there anybody from the public or any butters who would like to speak or question this particular pole placement? Would anybody from the Select Board like to speak to this or ask questions?
No questions.
Okay. Then I need a motion then from the Select Board to close the public hearing.
I move to close the public hearing.
Thanks, Chris. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Chris, and then Francine. All in favor?
Fishman, aye.
Fowles, aye.
Barton, aye.
And Groden, aye. So then I'll need a motion to approve or deny the pole petition.
I'll make the motion. We approve the pole at the center line of former road as described before.
I'll second it.
Okay. Any further question? Again, Randall has approved all three of these. So, Ed, did you get that? It's John and Chris.
Chris, there's a second. Thank you.
Yep. Okay, all in favor?
Fishman, aye.
Fowles, aye.
Barton, aye.
And Groden, aye. So let's see.
They have to approve three. They've done two. They're on the third one now.
Okay. Thank you. That brings us to the last of the pole hearings. It's 6:18, and I'll open up the public hearing. And Ed, if you could read the last one, please.
Certainly.
6:18, did you get that?
Yes, I did. Town of Southampton Select Board, petition for pole locations. The Southampton Select Board will hold a hearing at 6:10 p.m. on November 17, 2020, via remote meeting due to the COVID-19 pandemic restrictions on the petition by N-Star Electric Company, DBA EverSource Energy, and Verizon New England, Inc. requesting permission to relocate and/or install poles, wires, cables, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way. Locations: Existing pole 14/27 to be relocated approximately 44 feet northeasterly of existing location and approximately 23 feet northerly of the center line of East Street. Existing pole 14/28 to be relocated approximately 60 feet easterly of existing location and approximately 17 feet northerly of the center line of Strong Road. Reason to accommodate Town of Southampton Bridge Project. Wherefore, they pray that after due notice and hearing as provided by law, they be granted joint or identical locations for and permission to construct and maintain a line of poles, wires, and cables together with such sustaining and protecting fixtures as they may find necessary. Said poles to be erected substantially in accordance with the field plan herewith and made apart hereof, marked 6A030181. Also for permission to lay and maintain underground laterals, cables, and wires in the above or intersecting public ways for the purpose of making connections with such poles and buildings as each of said petitioners may desire for distributing purposes. Your petitioners agree to reserve space for one crossarm at a suitable point on each of said poles for the fire and police telephone signal wires belonging to the municipality and used by it exclusively for municipal purposes. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the matter may participate in the remote meeting at the time designated above via Zoom. Computer or smart device, video and audio, go to zoom.us/join. Phone, audio only, the number is 646-558-8656. The meeting ID, enter 827-0085-2220. Pass... Enter the password 825430. N-Star Electric Company, DBA EverSource Energy, and Verizon New England, Inc. Maureen Groden, Chair, Select Board, Town of Southampton.
Thank you very much, Ed. I'm just wondering if we lost Nick.
Well, this is Mike Santos from EverSource. I wrote the job, so I'm going to talk about this one.
Okay, that sounds great. Well, thank you and welcome. If you would like to speak to that now, that would be great.
Okay, thank you. I've been out there in the past with the town and the town's consulting engineer designing the new bridge. We picked the places to relocate our wires to accommodate the bridge construction by setting... relocating two new poles, two poles as just described. And that would be the best fit to accommodate the new bridge and demolition of the old one.
Okay. So this is a permanent pole placement, not just for the construction, correct?
Right. It'll stay permanent.
Okay. Is there a member from the public or a butter who would like to speak to this pole petition? No? Is there anybody from the Select Board that would like to speak to this pole position?
Just a question as to when this work might be done.
I'm waiting to... I don't know the schedule of the bridge, but we would definitely, once notified by the consulting engineer or the town, or I'm sure there'll be a pre-bid or a pre-construction meeting, we would start our work to accommodate the construction.
Okay. Thank you.
And I think, Chris, right now, the thing that the next step is to actually get the license, right, Ed? Isn't that...
Right.
Yes, the waterways license.
The waterway license, yeah. Yeah.
Any other questions from the Select Board? Could I have a motion then to close the public hearing, please?
I'll move to close the public hearing.
I'll second it.
All right. Francine and then Chris, all in favor?
Fishman, aye.
Fowles, aye.
And Groden, aye. Can I have a motion to approve or deny the pole petition, please? And this is for the East Street Bridge Project.
I'll make the motion. We approve the pole for Long Strong Road for the bridge project.
Second?
I'll second it.
John and then Chris. Any further question, comment? All in favor?
Fishman, aye.
Fowles, aye.
Barton, aye.
And Groden, aye. All right. Thank you, everyone. That concludes the three pole hearings.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
We're just going to hold off a little bit until 6:30 to actually do the next agenda item, which is actually the presentation of the MPIC. So we don't have any appointments or nominations. Next would be reports. If we have one person or two that might want to start the Select Board reports.
Okay. Oh, no.
Okay.
Okay. The Personnel Policy and Procedures Board met on November 9 via Zoom. At meeting, the PPVB approved the PCF to promote Kristi facto to Assistant Treasurer Collector and also approved the PRF for Administrative Clerk in the Treasurer Collector's Office. Both documents are on tonight's agenda for this Select Board approval. The PPVB also began its review and revision of its personnel rules and regulations were adopted in August of 2016. The next meeting is scheduled for this Thursday, November 19, at 6:00 p.m. via Zoom. The Community Preservation Commission, although the committee has not met, the chair has announced that the state awarded our CPC $233,324 for community preservation, which is approximately 70% of the town's share, but $335,456, bringing the total this year for CPC new revenue in at $568,780. Ideas for projects are being solicited for CPC support. And I encourage people who are interested to go to the town website to review the eligibility criteria for those project submissions. And then finally, at the November 4 ZVA meeting, the board did approve for two variances for roof heights for properties on one on White Loaf Road and the other on Crooked Ledge Road. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Would Chris or John like to speak to any reports?
John, go ahead. Mine might take a minute.
Mine won't take long. Planning is meeting tomorrow night at 7:00. Finance had a meeting last Monday. I wasn't able to attend. Ed was there. So Ed, if during your report, you can do a quick update on that. And that's all for me.
Okay. Chris, you want to go ahead?
Yeah, no, I'll go ahead then. Okay. Board of Assessors met on the 10th. Basically, routine business. And then the Open Space Committee met on the 12th. And basically, it's a continuing process of considering the potential lands that might be conserved or of conservation value in town. And basically, we've spent some time trying to support landowners and basically do some education outreach about the potential options for conservation of their lands. And to that end, several postcards were sent out to landowners over the past couple of weeks to alert them to a webinar put on by UMass about protecting your legacy. So it's basically a land use, land conservation webinar that's free of charge. And so several landowners were notified of that, and hopefully, a few of them might have taken advantage of that. Lastly, Concom met just last night, I think, just last night, I think, or a couple nights ago, whenever that was, last night. And basically worked on a couple of simple things of certifications of compliance for two new constructions on High Street. They also selected their representative to the MVP Committee process, that'll be Brittany Guttermuth. And then probably the biggest thing is that Concom approved a conservation restriction, a CR, on property owned by Mr. and Mrs. Riggs on 88 Pleasant Street. This is a 12-acre parcel that is formerly part of the old gun farm. It's of value in terms of watershed protection. It's also on the Massachusetts Scenic Landscape Inventory. And the Riggs have been working for about a year and a half, along with Conservation Works, to actually go through the state tax credit program for conservation, excuse me, and that's finally all been completed. And as a result, the 12 acres are being donated to the town. The Conservation Commission will hold the CR on that. The land, however, will not be open to public use. And I think that's, last thing is Dan LaValley, Dan Breen, Anna Breen spent some time up at Wolf Hill doing a lot of chainsawing and cutting of down trees on the path up there, so the trail on what you may know as Alder Pond slash Wolf Hill Sanctuary is a lot clearer than it was. And hopefully people can get out and enjoy the last few days of decent weather maybe that we'll have. So that's, I think, all I've got.
Great. Dan and the rest, thank you very much for doing that. I saw that on Facebook, that's fantastic. And also, great news about the conservation restriction, that's fantastic.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
I remember they had come, they had come to a Concom meeting back a while ago, so I'm glad that finally came to.
Yeah, it takes, it takes a while. And actually, that, once, once Concom is finished doing the signing, I believe it has to come to all of us here at Select Board to sign off as well.
That's correct.
That'll be coming sometime in the next week, I would assume.
That's fantastic. So Council of Aging, I think, because we had a Thursday meeting last time, I already reported on their November 4th meeting, and Board of Health has not met since we last met. Ed will report when he does his report on the meeting that we had Monday, which was the COVID sort of emergency conference call that we have every two weeks. So now that it's actually 6:31, I'll go ahead then and we'll suspend Ed's Town Administrator Report in favor of having the presentation, but want to give an opportunity for the Planning Board in the event that you have a quorum to go ahead and initiate, open up your meeting. Is there a quorum of the Planning Board?
No.
No?
I only see two members, Dan LaValley and me, right now. Am I missing someone? I don't think we have a quorum.
Okay. So we'll still go ahead and have the presentation. I just wanted to give you an opportunity to open up your meeting in the event that you did have a quorum. So if you see somebody else joining, don't hesitate to speak up, okay?
We have somebody on telephone, if they could identify themselves.
Yeah, it's Rob Kelly.
Okay. Welcome. Okay.
All right. If I, sorry, I'll just go ahead and introduce as the Chair of the Master Plan Implementation Committee. As you have all been well aware, we've been involved with putting forth and having you all replied to a community engagement survey. And the results of that had been posted up on the town website, but we thought that was very important to try to give a more visual presentation. And so we have Ken Komea, our consultant from the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, who has been working with us for basically all year long and has really gone over and above all the duties that I'm sure he was expecting to be involved in. And so he's definitely been a real help to us and a real, a real guide to help us through this process. And so we're really pleased to have him here to give a presentation tonight, and hopefully we'll have a few minutes for questions. And this is just meant to be an initial presentation, and this will be just a kind of a kickoff for some further, further meetings and further discussion with other boards and committees in town. But that's it.
Thank you, Chris, and welcome, Ken. I just wonder if there's other people on the Master Plan Committee, just to acknowledge, that are on this call by any chance?
Yeah, Christina Madsen is on the, on the call. And then part of our existing audience, Francine Tishman and Cindy Palmer are also on the Master Plan Committee.
All right, just want to say thank you to you guys as well. And I also think you have a quorum now?
Yes.
We do, and Paul, yeah. Paul Deven is just joined, yeah, okay.
Okay, hi, Paul. So do you want, do you want to officially call your meeting to order?
Salute.
Okey-dokey. So that's about 6:33. So Ken, thank you very much for coming and good to see you again. If you'd like to start the presentation, that'd be great.
Let me share my screen. All right. All right, so good evening all. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. Select Board members, Planning Board members, and Master Plan Implementation Committee members. Again, I'm Ken Komea with the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. I'm a senior planner in the Land Use and Environment Section and often work with communities on municipal planning, mostly, master plan efforts, development review, and studies like this, working with committees in, in an engagement setting. And although engagement looks a lot different this year, I think that the committee and the, the community with regards to the survey really shined. It's one of the shining points of, of, of the, of the community's involvement in this process. So to start, so as Chris introduced, the Master Plan Implementation Committee, in, in your master plan, the responsibility of the Master Plan Implementation Committee is that it's a deliberative body that focuses on advancing the recommendations of this master plan. And so as the town is aware, and I'm sure the, the committee and the various boards, including the Select Board, the Planning Board, Historical Commission, Council on Aging, those various community boards, there are specific tasks in there that are outlined to, to help forward the community in implementing some goals and strategies that have been identified in your 2013 master plan. So with regards to this project, the work to date, the committee prior to working with Pioneer Valley Planning Commission reviewed the implementation goals and strategies in 2018 and 2019. And then 2020 came around and the town, through the Planning Board, applied for a DLTA project. And this is, this is a, we're nearing the culmination of, of the effort. With that said, the particular project is, is basically to update the implementation element. So as you know, there are various elements within the master plan, land use, transportation, natural resources, open space, cultural, that identified goals and strategies back in 2013 that were meant to be implemented over time, within a 15-year period. And there were timelines that were established in that plan. So this DLTA project allows for us to revisit that and also possibly address through the community survey, through meetings with the Master Plan Implementation Committee, some, some goals and strategies that have been identified that either, you know, shouldn't be as strong of a priority as it was prior. I think that there is an establishment of a community voice that may direct some of the boards that are responsible for the existing, existing goals and strategies that could help the, the community move forward. The work to date, as I mentioned before, the, in 2018, 2019, the, the Master Plan Implementation Committee reviewed those existing goals and strategies. I attended a meeting in February when we kicked off the project with regards to understanding the Planning Board's perspective and some of the priorities that the Select Board shared. And then we did the community survey this past summer. Work to follow, prioritization and understanding of the goals and strategies that have been established by the master plan and refining the work that the Master Plan Implementation Committee did in 2018, 2019. And then I think, as we were discussing in a, in a previous meeting with the Master Plan Implementation Committee, is understanding how town committees and boards should be using this momentum of this community process to kick off and resume implementation and really examine on how to move forward. So with regarding the community engagement survey data and findings, the, the survey period, as you know, because it was posted everywhere, the survey period was June 26th through September 8th of this year, and the town had 896 respondents. And I will say, and I've mentioned this to the committee multiple times, in working with other communities, that's the highest number I've ever seen with, with a community of your size particularly. So I think it's, it's worth putting notice out there that I think the community was engaged. I see Dan LaValley is on the call, I think he participated in the PSA. And it, it was a real community effort to get the word out. And I do applaud the committee in doing that and establishing items and steps to move forward to do that and get the maximum participation. So the survey had some initial questions to identify the respondents. Length of residency, homeowner, renter, household member, gender identity, the age range of the respondents and the description of households. So I think one of the highlights of this particular survey with regards to the length of residency is that half of the respondents were residents of Southampton for up to 20 years. So these, these are both your newcomers up to 20 years, and then the remainder are 21 and above. So one of the questions that I think come up during a master plan process is specific to the evolution of a town, right? And you go through a particular discussion in your master plan process on, on how you should be proceeding with development. The biggest thing here is that a third of the community likes the rural residential community with minimal commercial development, much, much as it is today. So there's real, no real departure with regards to how the town maybe should be approaching development. Maybe, you know, if you took the next one, the next highest, which is the diverse housing options, looking at that and exploring additional housing for, for whatever that means to the community, that could be something that could be gleaned from this particular process. But I think understanding minimal commercial development and understanding that, you know, you'll find in the community survey that as, as you've had time to possibly look at it based on it being posted on the town website, that there are some comments regarding housing in town. So we'll go to housing. Based on your income level, are there sufficient housing options for you and your family in Southampton? 83% said yes and 17% said no. But one of the, the, the things regarding this is there was a follow-up question to this particular question. It provided a way to contextualize that yes or no vote. And so with that said, for those that said yes, they do think there's sufficient housing, but appears not enough. More options should be made for a senior and assisted living and low to moderate income housing. I think a lot of housings, houses are not affordable to people in my age group. We are older and established, but our children, as they move out of the house, probably won't be able to afford Southampton. And no, there aren't. As a couple looking forward to retirement, we cannot afford to purchase a single-level home in town on what our retirement income would be. Student loans, so that is taking another aspect of your population, which are the younger folks that may have student loans to find affordable housing. I know as someone that is going through the process of home buying at the moment and having student loans at the moment that are taking a big chunk of what I could afford, that, that, I think that's a very true statement. We remodeled an older home that we wouldn't be able to purchase at its current value. And I find now, but if I need or want to move to something smaller, I probably could not do so. And it looks like something, there was another comment after that, that let's see if I have it here. No, I don't. Anyway. I think that goes to say that there may be some ideas of exploring housing development that could be helpful for multiple income groups as well as multiple ages. And I think knowing that and seeing that there was a good chunk of comments that you can see, and I give, that was a snapshot of the comments from the, the community survey report. But they were representative of some universal comments with regard to affordable housing for seniors and housing that's on one level for seniors. This housing slide shows that you have, if you were to move to another living situation within Southampton someday, what type of housing would you anticipate? Oops. What housing would you anticipate would meet your future needs? Owning a home, and I don't anticipate requiring a different housing situation. So, you know, I think that the respondents probably have, you know, answered this question because they were content with their current housing situation. They answered owning a home because they're currently in a home. And, you know, I think if anything else can be gleaned from this, a fifth, living in a 55-plus independent community, owning or renting a dwelling with everything on one floor. That was a lot of, there was a lot of comments in that, in, in the report and in the free response answers of the survey with regards to providing home, affordable homes for seniors that clicked those or checked off those boxes. On a scale of one to five, I would like to see the town provide affordable and accessible housing options by promoting development of. I think, you know, if anything can be gleaned from here, there is a majority of support, strongly support and support of Housing Meeting Americans with Disabilities Act compliance. But I think what's also telling from here is that there is a strong opposition to apartments and apartment buildings and those types of housing, those types of housing products. It's clear too, with the answer of conversion of single-family to multifamily houses, that, you know, may be a conversation with regards to density and where it can belong.
Good, and you? Dicky, how are you?
And where it could belong is something that the town can pursue, either through the Housing Committee or, you know, maybe discussions with the Planning Board regarding what land uses.
So Ken, just a question right there.
Sure.
The detached, single-family homes, if you look at column four and column five, the two of those together, that's a pretty.
Hold on a minute, hold on a minute.
Yeah.
Just mute your phone or Ed, if you could mute folks for the presentation.
Sure.
Thanks.
Um, yes, to Chris's point, yes. As far as detached, single-family homes, you know, I think that goes to say that that is the type of housing product that would be preferred by town, towns' members. And I think that also is consistent with the identification that Southampton should be developing in the way that it is at the moment. Community priorities, you know, I think this was, was an interesting question. And I think based on some of the conversations with the Master Plan Implementation Committee, especially those members that are members of the Select Board with regards to some of the priorities as far as looking at public land, buying land to build a public safety complex. You know, there is a, there is an argument to examine that further. Investing, there's neutral neutrality in investing in public sewer water provision in commercial areas. I think that goes to say too, that if you look at the land use section, which is the next slide, that will kind of showcase what that, maybe that sentiment by those who responded with that, what that could lead to. There's a strong support for developing a public utility to improve internet broadband service and pursuing renewable energy generation on town-owned land. So those are our big ones. Acquiring land to, and complete the bike path from Sheldon to the East Hampton Line. So, you know, with that said, I think you had the ability to indicate your level of support for each of the following strategies. And then right after, you got to choose the top five. And if you look to the right side of the screen, number one was acquiring land and completing the bike path from Sheldon to the East Hampton Line. And number two was developing a public utility to improve internet broadband service, generating revenue for the town. Preservation of open space, pursuing energy generation and bicycle paths and greenways that link open spaces in neighborhoods. So, you know, as someone that has also been part of the open space and recreation plan development, this kind of makes sense, yeah, as far as the preservation of open space, understanding that if you want to do solar, being mindful that possibly you explore that on town-owned land and developing connections to your open spaces and neighborhoods. And that's also, I think, reflecting in your number one priority, as, as the respondents had suggested, was acquiring, acquiring the land and completing the bike path. And then you see the, the latter three, which, you know, had neutral to strong support for, that measured in, you know, up to you know, up to forty-three, um, up to a quarter, not quite, um, fifty percent or a little bit, uh, fifty percent from neutral to strongly support. But it, it's reflective here in, in the ranking, um, option. So, the last slide is land use. Normally, the land use section would be usually handled by those that are responsible for drafting bylaws or regulations for um, protection of lands, usually the conservation commission or the um, planning board. And um, I think, you know, it's the, the largest um, response was a neutral response to making no change in current zoning bylaws. Um, but I think to harp on some of the other trends with regards to protecting development and, and again, working on the open space recreation plan, this section right here specifically, um, limiting development to capacity of town's water supply and zoning some areas for agricultural and very low-density uses. I think that suggests that there may be some sort of connection, um, to um, restricting, restricting development or creating regulations to do so. One of the items that, if I can bring the open space uh, and recreation plan, which I, I think was, um, was an awesome opportunity to kind of pair those processes together. You know, understanding that there may be a way to address development, um, that was established in the open space plan. So for instance, um, the town used to have, I believe, um, a committee of those that, um, were, uh, abutted the aquifer, um, Barnes Aquifer. Um, this could suggest that maybe an examination of how to address development near those, uh, th- those particular parcels, um, especially if, um, you know, this suggests that you should be doing that, um, by creating agricultural lands. Um, that could be something that comes out of this. Um, and it would be consistent with some of the other processes that have been established by the town. Continuing to agulate, educate landowners about options for permanently protecting land. Um, you know, you have close to fifty percent here. Again, I think it really draws attention to this particular sentiment that the residents and the respondents of the survey really like the way Southampton is pursuing. Um, I, you know, Chris mentioned before the, before we went into the presentation that the conservation commission approved the conservation restriction, um, and the select board will be taking that on. You know, that's something and, and use, you're, you're moving in that direction to, that understanding that there is a commitment from these various land use boards that, um, preservation is on the minds, um, of your, um, of the residents. And I think that is my last slide. So I'm gonna stop sharing so I can see you all. And um, really, I think, um, as I, as I mentioned earlier in the presentation, the next steps are to work with the master plan implementation to com- committee to work on the action plan, which is, um, really a rehash of your implementation strata- goals and strategies that you established in twenty thirteen, understanding that there have been conversations, um, in town. There have been some pro- there has been some progress made in, in um, accomplishing those goals and strategies, that we just want to basically update those tables and then also provide the resources, um, to go about in implementing that now that seven years or so, eight years, seven years have passed. Um, and, you know, there's a new, um, administration and there's some new grant programs that could be very helpful for the town to take advantage of as it continues to implement goals and strategies.
Ken, thank you very much. That was incredible. That's uh, such good work. Um, just a tremendous response. I'm just so impressed. Um, Tammy, wanna ask a question?
Yes, Tammy, well, Lunas two ninety-eight College Highway. Um, can, do you know, will we, will you be publicizing that, the results that, um, presentation you just gave to the website or for others to be able to see that haven't, are not on here tonight?
Yeah, so, um, you know, in addition to, uh, Chris mentioning that the full report, so this is a snapshot. These were just some questions. All of the questions that the, that the survey takers took this summer are on the website. Um, we can definitely provide this presentation there as, as a slideshow as well.
Great, thank you so much.
Yeah, you're welcome. Yeah, no, that, on the, what's on the website shows the actual breakdown by age, by years. Uh, so you can see how evenly broken down it is actually by age and by years in town.
Is that on our town website?
It's on the town website, yeah.
Okay.
It's on the homepage, I believe, Ed, you're right, I think. And, uh,
You could put that on the spot.
Yeah, it's there. I know it's there. Um, and it's, um, in a few places like Ken mentioned here with the housing one, where people had a chance to comment and say, I'm not, well, I'm not satisfied with my housing because we were able to take, um, a good representation of people's written comments and put those up too. So you can see what the thinking is of people, um, as well as just the distribution around town. I mean, one of our worries when COVID hit was, you know, we're not gonna have this person-to-person contact, and we had had a, a fairly, well, sort of defined outreach strategy where we were hoping to have various little, you know, meetings around town and much more one-on-one kind of discussion about this. And all of that had to be shelved for the way we did carry this out. And with that, as Rini said, I mean, to have this level of response is basically about twenty percent of our registered voters in town, which is astronomical. I mean, I think, Ken, you started out telling us to be happy with five percent, ten at the most. And so we were just thrilled to have really exceeded that. And I think you'll see on the, on the version that's on the, um, the report that's on the town website, at the very end, there was that optional question, if you mentioned, if you remember about, you know, where are you located around town? And it wasn't to get anybody's address, it was just to make sure that as people were responding, where were they? Were we really hitting all around town or were we kind of just stuck right in the center of town? And we had, I forget, at least twenty, twenty-five different streets and roads listed. So you can see, I, I think we had a pretty good, pretty good representation around town. Um, so I feel like we hit the corners of town at least and not just in one, one or two small areas. So hopefully this can get the beginnings of a roadmap for us as an action plan and figure out where we wanna spend our energies and how we, how we go about implementing some of these thoughts that the residents have.
Thank you. I, I greatly appreciate you, um, providing that for us.
Welcome.
What other comments, questions do people have?
I, I do have a comment. I, I wanna thank certainly Ken, but also, um, Chris and Cindy Palmer, who were driving forces behind the committee and really, you know, really, um, motivated those eight hundred and ninety-six people as many ways as they could. So, thank you to both, to all three of you. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Now, everybody, everybody had a role in it from the committee. Everybody worked hard on it. It was, uh, just trying to come up with creative ways to get the word out. So, um, yeah.
I mean, I've, I've seen committees that work hard but don't have the kind of results that you folks have come up with. So I, I think it's, it's very great to see that information and it's a good step going forward to use it.
Yeah. And I think if, if you have a chance to sort of sit down and kind of, you know, review it in, in more detail, obviously, we didn't wanna take a whole lot of time tonight, but we wanted to at least give, give the overview of what, what the results were showing. And you'll have a chance to look at, at, uh, you know, what's on the website to sort of look at each, each question in more detail. And I'm hoping that each committee or each of the boards and committees that, um, would find this relevant. For example, housing, um, there's obviously some work here that housing could look at and say, okay, well, what are people thinking about? And that might help shape some of their thoughts or, you know, planning board or zoning board or whomever, um, CONCOM. You know, there's, there's things in here, I think, for, for various boards and committees to glean from that. And I'm hoping certainly, you know, from select board's point of view, we can provide some overall direction. So.
Cindy, you do wanna say something? I think you're muted at the moment.
No, I was just saying that Francine, thank you for that, but it, it was truly an amazing committee to be, is an amazing committee to be on. Uh, I know we're patting each other on the back and we should because we worked really hard. Christina's on this call. And I know, um, there are others that worked very hard, but, um, couldn't be here right now. Um, I'm really, um, energized. I'm really energized by all of this. Heaven help you all. I'm energized. Sorry. So, uh, I mean, I, I really think it ta- it gives us a super direction about what our town wants and, and that's what I'm moving towards, not what I think, but what the town wants. Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, I have a comment, or go ahead Francine, I'm sorry.
I, I just wanted to say that when I was running for select board, I did hear from a lot of people about what was the status of the master plan and getting the implementation going again, I think certainly, um, I, I think responses to, you know, the interest and the needs of, of people in the community. Uh, we didn't create anything new. We just kind of looked at the progress and the priorities that, you know, seven years later, um, people have in mind. So I, it, it's very timely. And, uh, I, I, I really have to commend Ken on how well he organized all of this, all of this information that makes it comprehensible to everyone. So thank you.
Dan, you wanna say something?
Yeah, I, I think the part that my brain keeps get, getting, getting, uh, wrapped around is that we, we did a survey about people who are already living in town and, and kind of asked them what kind of houses would they like to buy in town. Well, like, it, it seems like, well, they've already made that decision. Are these the people that would be, would be the next people buying houses in Southampton? You know, are, are, like, making the assumption that they're just gonna be moving around town when, when it's really probably people from neighboring communities or other areas. So really, the one that strikes, the, the chart that strikes me the most is, is number eight or, well, I guess it's graph number eight. It says, uh, do you live in? And it says ninety-four per percent of, of the houses are detached, single-family houses. I mean, I think that's pretty, I mean, pretty, it's pretty, um, it's a very large amount. And it may limit the, uh, type of, the, the people that can move and, and live in our town based on those type, the, the options that are available. So.
No, that's a really good point you made, Dan, because, um, I know when I moved to town, or a long time ago, over thirty years ago, I was actually interested in the water quality and one of the other towns I was looking at did not have their own police force. Uh, they relied on the state police, I think. So, um, you know, it would be very interesting, I think, to find out uh, what people are looking for in a community. So that's a really good point. What other comments or questions do people have?
My other question about this is, okay, awesome, awesome, we're getting this data. How, how, how much emphasis do you, are you putting on, on the data that you gathered here in this report, um, in updating, uh, the plan?
Ken, go ahead.
Well, I mean, I think that, you know, through the committee, uh, because it's supposed to be representative of the other committees in town as, as your master plan states, um, where you have ten members and of those, six of them come from your various committees that do the, the, the governance and, and various aspects of town government. You know, I think reflective and knowing the commitment of those committees to the various strategies and goals that have already been established. I don't know if there's gonna be a departure from those goals and strategies. You really can't. I mean, you can address them and you can address them by saying, you know, maybe suggesting that a new timeline be placed on some certain existing goals or, you know, and, and I'm gonna bring back the open space plan, knowing that in the time that we were working on the open space plan, um, a new committee was formed, the open space committee, right? So, knowing that there are some entities to draw on the skills of the townspeople to help implement the plan, I don't think it's gonna be a departure. I think the, the data helps in either confirming that those still remain goals and strategies that the select board or the planning board or, um, the conservation commission and, or various boards should be looking at. It, it's a, it's a component and it, it, it'll be addressed, you know, as, as appropriate. And I think knowing that the committees that have been established, have been established for those goals and strategies from the onset, they may take that data and say, you know, maybe this is a policy change on our end that, you know, we should be pursuing.
That's exactly, I think, uh, Ken, um, when I look at the list from the priorities in town, I mean, it's, I find this to be really helpful for me because we've talked about everything. We've talked about sewers, we've talked about public safety complex, we've talked about municipal light district, we've talked about all of this. So for so many people in town to actually prioritize, you know, and even looking at number one, the bike trail, like, I know that when you put a shine a light on something, that's when you really move the needle and you come up with action plans and strategies and that sort of thing. So I find that really helpful. But I mean, even look at number two has to do with, um, uh, developing broadband internet. I mean, we now have an ad hoc technology committee and that was actually included in one of their charges. Purchase land to preserve open space. We started with an ad hoc committee for open space and now it's a full committee. Uh, plus a five oh one C, three, uh, friends of open space. So, anyway, I just find it all very encouraging and I'm really appreciative of all the hard work.
Great. And let me just add a shout out to a couple of members that couldn't be here tonight from MPIC, uh, Jim Seeny and Brittany Taylor in particular. Uh, that couldn't be here tonight. And then a couple of former members, Margaret Larson, um, Mike Rosenberg, who led the charge early on, uh, most of last year in particular, and George Pluff as well. So, um, thanks to everybody that had a hand in it from the master plan over the last couple of years.
Great. Any, um, concluding questions, comments? Okay, great work. Thanks, everybody.
All right. Thanks.
Good job.
Thank you, Ken.
Thanks, Ken.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot, Ken. So, um, Matt, uh, welcome. Good to see you. Um, just so you know, on the agenda, we actually did cover the select board reports. Um, so, uh, and then we're up to the town administrative report. So if you want Ed to go first while you collect your thoughts a bit, I know you've been very busy with the, uh, local school committee. Did you wanna speak first or you want me to turn it over to Ed for a bit?
No, I'm, I'm sure, I'm happy to speak first. Um, it's a, it's a relatively quick update. I mean, Bill, and Tammy can maybe help, help me with Hampshire Regional if I, if I miss things, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna take kind of some broad strokes. I mean,
Hey Matt, before you go, would the planning board like to adjourn their meeting?
Right, thank you.
I think they left.
And, uh, no, some of us are, well, I'm here, but I just, Chris, want you to notice that Jim Seeny just joined us.
Oh, yeah, I just saw him. Hi, Jim, thanks.
But, okay, so, yeah, so you adj- adjourned at, uh, whatever time it is, uh, seven oh.
Seven oh eight.
Yeah.
Seven oh eight, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, sorry, go ahead, Matt.
It's okay. Um, so, I think we all know what we're working with here with COVID, but Hampshire Regional and Norris uh, continue very detailed and thoughtful and, um, heartwarming discussions surrounding return to school and plans, uh, to do that. These meetings go very late. Um, they're often, uh, both committees are unbelievably committed to these, to this, uh, monumental task. And there's so many, um, balls and variables in the air that need to be considered. Things surrounding HVAC and student spacing and schedules and IEPs and, and specials and eating and, uh, hand washing and, and, and so, so many things. I mean, too, too many things to list out, um, on this call, but, you know, listening, like, they think of every detail. They, they leave no stone unturned. This is both at Hampshire and at Norris. Um, they're, they're seemingly working together, um, as much as possible, the committee with the, with administration, principals and superintendent, as well as with teachers, um, and staff, and then, uh, soliciting, um, public feedback too. So from, from parents and doing surveys, um, and just trying to get overall pulse of everything. I, I, I just wanna commend them for the thorough job that they're doing, um, that at the end of the day, you're not gonna please everybody doing this. You can only hope to make kind of the right, uh, decisions and it is a often lonely task that's burdened with a ton of criticism, which I know, um, you know, we, we feel some of that here, but also, with every decision that they make, there's a constituent that's unhappy. that they make, there's a constituent that's unhappy and, you know, as we all know, these are volunteer positions, these people care very, very much and care deeply and are just trying to make the best decisions possible, both for the town of Southampton, for the kids, for the administrators, the teachers and make kind of steady progress. So, to that end, both, both schools, Hampshire Regional and Norris are making slow incremental and I think everybody thinks that that's probably the best way to do things rather than all at once or herky-jerky or quick, just to make slow movements and see how things go towards making school more robust and bringing kids back. And so, Hampshire Regional is looking at that from a hybrid perspective and they have a really good plan in place that they're making progress towards. And Norris has been, as we all know, been doing, executing a hybrid plan very well since the start of school and are making slow incremental progress with the special, especially the younger and more vulnerable grades to bringing them back to full while keeping people at six, upgrading HVAC systems with I-Waves. These are, this is both schools, making sure that room air turnover in the rooms is exceedingly good, both from a regular building perspective, but also comparing that to even, even medical building perspectives with filtration and I-Waves and cleaning and sanitizing. I mean, I, I could keep going on and on about all of the thoughts on this, but I will tell you that our school committee, both at the Norris and Hampshire Regional level, very committed, very thoughtful, very engaging and they, they have good debate. I mean, there's, there's no stone unturned in these meetings, so I just, I want to commend them for that because it is in many ways a thankless job at this point with what we're all going through. But I'm, you know, I'm proud of the progress and I'm proud of the discussion, I'm proud of the debate, I mean, it's, if you have a chance to look at one of these, it's, it's certainly worth the watch. It's just, it's good community involvement.
Sense I get. Tammy, do you want to add anything?
Tammy Lillingsworth, 298 College Highway. Thanks, Matt, I really appreciate you being on those calls and being on both school committees as a liaison, gives you the sight of seeing how both of us have to work together. I do want to let you know, we are meeting every two weeks for the school committee and we're in contract negotiations, so that's twice a week right now. And we are, oh, we actually are safety, we have a safety committee up at the school which has school committee members, board of health members, teachers, the nurses, they are all working together, looking at the metrics and they have a really thought-out plan that they're going through, we're not just making brash decisions just to get the kids back.
It sounds like it's a monumental task and it's very difficult to make everyone happy. This, it's really complicated about, you know, going back to school and it's just so impactful of families and, you know, kids and teachers and administration, everything, so, thanks, everybody, that's, that's tough, very difficult, long meetings too, you guys are rivaling us, the local school committee meetings.
Yep.
All right, anything else, Matt?
No, I, hopefully I conveyed the sentiment, I'm proud of these people, I'm touched by their commitment. I hope everybody hangs in there, I know it can be frustrating, especially thankless and that, and it would just, there's so much knowledge and, you know, knowledge and database in all of these people's brains that have been hanging in with this for so, for so much time and I just, I hope that they're, they can somehow find the reasons to continue on because for each of them, they all hold a different opinion on all of these things and collectively their opinions matter and get the job done and it just, I just hope everybody can hang in there just a little bit longer until we can kind of get through this because, you know, I don't think you'd want to be a newcomer coming into these situations right now.
No, and you absolutely did capture like how, how full, complicated and committed they are, so, thanks. Do you want to turn to the ad hoc grant committee? I know the CARES Act funding got in there by the end of October, is there any other activity since then, Chris?
Nutsense, we are going to be meeting this week, we're meeting Thursday, yep. So, we've got a couple of other grant possibilities that have come across our wavelength that we're going to talk about and see if it's anything of any interest for, for the town, but nothing, nothing new yet.
Okay, good. I did add an agenda item later on about the Mass Trails Grant, I don't know if you got that email, but I'm hoping we can talk about that later on the agenda, okay?
Okay.
Ed, all set for town administrator report?
Sure. Updates, just let you know that Chief Ellingsworth has let me know that the police SUV cruiser, which was ordered to replace the one which was totaled back in 2019 and is paid for by the insurance settlement, was delivered to the police department today. We do have that one. The departments in town hall and other town municipal locations have implemented the use of sign-in sheets for all non-employees to help with contract tracing, for anyone coming into town hall or the other buildings, for anyone who the employees may contact either inside or outside the doors to exchange paper with due to COVID-19, so we implemented that this week. The Massachusetts Association of Conservation Commissions has let us know that Dan LaValle has completed eight units of the Massachusetts Association of Conservation Commission, MACC Fundamentals for Massachusetts Conservation Commissioners Training Program and has received a certificate of achievement for that accomplishment, so congratulations to Dan.
He signed off, but.
Did he? Uh, let's see, the highway department submitted, or has submitted for recycling dividend program grant and have received Sustainable Materials Recovery Program Municipal Recycling Grant from the DEP for the transfer station and the amount of $5,600, this is something that they put in for each and every year, and I was wondering, you know, it has been awarded to us and would the select board be willing to authorize me to sign for the acceptance of this grant on behalf of the town?
Would someone like to make a motion to that effect?
We move to authorize Ed to accept the award on behalf of the town.
$5,600, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Francine and then Chris. Any questions? Fall in favor?
Tish, nine.
Falls, I.
Martin, nine. Matt's muted.
Oh, I said it, roll and dice, thank you.
Yep, Groden, nine.
All right, thank you. Okay. There'll be another public poll hearing on December 1st for poll locations for the other new subdivision off Pequot Road, Supply Utilities to Fitch Farm Way. The water department will have bids available tomorrow for the relocation of the water main out of the Manhattan River and onto the Route 10 Bridge, which crosses over the Manhattan River, the bids will be due back on December 9th. And then, again, and probably maybe the last time this year I read this one, like to remind our residents that the water commissioners have put into place voluntary water restrictions, A, limit all non-essential water use and no outdoor automatic sprinkler use between the hours of 7:00 AM and 7:00 PM, seven days a week, and B, please restrict outdoor water usage to no more than two days per week. We hope this will result in a reduction in water use, if not, the water commissioners may have to consider implementation of a mandatory water restriction. We thank you in advance for helping us conserve and protect our water supply. And then upcoming select board meetings coming up are December 1st and December 15th. And that's it for me.
Any questions, Fred? Okay, are you going to update on the, the call Monday on the COVID update?
I was going to do that under the COVID-19 update.
Sounds good. Okay, so, next is 93 College Highway closing update.
And, yeah, I just wanted to let everybody know, I did send out an email last week that the closing on 93 College Highway did occur last Tuesday and the deed was recorded late Tuesday afternoon, so we have closed on that property, it is now over the Fletcher's and I did receive the checks from their attorney for both the purchase and the tax calculation that was due.
Really good, really good, I'm glad that, that was a long time coming. Actually, between the water pipe remove, moving and the telephone poles moving for the bridge and, and this, it really feels good to feel like things are happening. Any questions for Ed about that? Okay, so, town parking lot plowing and sidewalk clearing, the request for quotes. Oh, actually, nope, I'm sorry, I'm skipping down, anything on the doors, Grant?
I just want to let you know that they, I have sent along, we received the last set of invoices, which was 12 months of the fuel oil, oil heating invoices from the highway garage along to the vendor, so they now have all the information that they have asked for, required to do that energy audit that we're having done courtesy of EverSource and I know that the vendor was back out at the police station, the old town hall at East Street last, I think it was last Thursday, so, to look at those furnaces, so that is moving along.
Any questions about that? I have a question, so, all these bills are being compiled, they're, EverSource is doing this energy audit to determine, we have to show, we have to show $136,000 worth of energy savings in order to get the money, how does that work?
No, what this will actually do is it actually creates a, a baseline for whether it's electric heating at the, at the different buildings and locations in town, so they can use that to show the potential savings, whether that be from like a lighting change in this building to LEDs or a change to, you know, a different heating methodology or some other things. So, that was one of the requirements that the D O E R had given us because those were not included back when the town originally applied to be a green community. So, they need that information to actually turn around when, you know, we take the next step and say, okay, you know, we'd like to change the lighting out in town hall or the library and, you know, here's, here's the calculation of what, what it's going to cost for a year, so D O E R could take a look and say, okay, by looking at what they have spent and what the calculations are that they will spend in a future year, yes, that project is, you know, worthwhile to move forward with, you know, go ahead and, you know, whatever we applied for, you know, they might say, okay, yeah, that, those three projects or four projects are good, we're going to release $75,000 at that $138,000 level, but like I say, they want to make sure that the town is spending it in an efficient manner so that we can get to our 20% savings over that five-year period.
Okay, and are we paying EverSource anything?
Well, just through our electric bills, but no.
Not for the audit, it's a free audit.
Energy audits are free to the town.
Yep, and they're free for individuals too, actually.
Right.
Yep, okay, how about code red renewal update, did we already sign off on that last time?
Well, you authorized me to sign off, I just wanted to let you know, I put it in the packet, I did receive the, the new renewal letter and, you know, with the terms of $3,900 in the first year and $41.92 and 50 cents in the second, $41.92, 50 cents in year three, but I did sign that and send it back to them, so we will renew, renew on a three-year period for January 1st and they will send us invoice for the $3,900 for, to be paid for that first year.
Sounds good. Any other questions about the code red agreement? And let's talk about COVID-19 update, as you all know, we're on a surge again nationally as well as in our community and state, so I just appeal to everyone to please continue to follow all the guidance that's been given, you know, it's really life and death. You want to give an update from our call Monday?
Yes, you know, we had, had our bi-weekly call on Monday, yourself, Jerry Swanson, John Wortman, Ian Ellingsworth and myself were, were on the call, you know, Gary, our health director, did, you know, iterate that the, you know, the numbers of COVID-19 positives are going up, you know, not only nationally, but here in Massachusetts and also here in Southampton, so, you know, a reminder for everyone to, you know, stay vigilant, especially around the holidays, you know, do the social distancing, try to keep six feet from, from everyone, you know, our new regulations require us to wear masks when we're in public, even if we can maintain six-foot distancing, the new regulations requiring, you know, private, whether you call parties, meetings in houses or whatever, restricting them to no more than 10 people on the inside and no more than 25 people on the outside have gone into effect, there's been new restrictions on business closures as far as restaurants, liquor licenses go, and Massachusetts has implemented, I won't say curfew, but stay-at-home advisory for those unless you're traveling to or from work or going to get medical supplies or food from 10:00 PM at night to 5:00 AM in the morning. Both Chief Ellingsworth and Chief Wortman for Fire EMS reported that they have, they have a good supply of PPE at this point for their use and that, you know, their staffs, staffs are, are healthy and stable. The workforce, whether it's, you know, here or elsewhere, especially for first responders or police or fire or ambulance, are starting, starting to get weary, this has been six months already, you know, in the making of responding and planning and it's not over yet, you know, the, you know, everything I see says, even with the vaccines coming out, they may, may start at the beginning of the year, but by the time they get to everybody, we're going to be at least into late spring, you know, next year, so we have a ways to go as it is and I do realize that being the holiday times that, you know, when people usually get together, whether it's at Thanksgiving or Christmas, again, you know, stay vigilant as much, much as possible, try to limit those gatherings to small gatherings for Thanksgiving and Christmas because this is the type of time of year and the type of gatherings that COVID-19 will really multiply the numbers as far, as far as spreading goes. And as you alliterated earlier, we have, and that goes into the CARES Act funding a little bit, but, you know, we did apply for round two of the CARES Act funding for the October 30th. the October 30th application deadline. Have her, we have heard back from our contact at A and F. They had some questions for me on our application. I'm working with, with Brendan there to move forward with that and answer any questions that he may have. I've had some questions for them. One of the things that they actually flat out denied was they said that either in carryover funds or in new funds that vaccine refrigerators are, are exempt under the CRVF funding. So I've asked some follow-up questions there because, you know, if, if we are expected to have vaccines available and are going to need to have to store them for distribution, neither myself nor Jerry Swanson can quite grasp why they would not be eligible for CBRF funding. So I'll keep the board posted as we move forward and answering those questions and get our final approval for round two CARES Act funding.
You know, I just read a draft of the distribution plan for the state of Massachusetts and immunization for this virus. And, you know, what it says is, I really do think that they're going to be contracting directly with pharmacies and community health centers. So I don't think that there's going to be vaccine distribution at the local level. The other thing too is, you know, if, if they end up having, you know, one vaccine is a two-shot deal, the other one requires extremely low temperatures. So I just, I don't, I can see why they might not approve a vaccine refrigerator because there is too many unknowns about it. But Ed, if you could let us and also department heads know as soon as you get the word that these items have been funded, just because of the window that we anticipate, you know, we're working with.
Yeah, everything has to be purchased and in hand by December 30th. So yeah, absolutely.
I guess, Ed, you, you don't think there's any, any likelihood that they will extend that date?
Well, the question at this point is, do I think they will? Yes. Will they do it before December 30th? Or is it more likely to possibly occur after the change of administration, which might be February? So, you know, if, if that's the more likely scenario, do you want to gamble on that it will be extended and have money in hand that you didn't spend as of December 30th and then not have them not?
No, I, I don't. It's just that, you know, with things escalating, the fact that you would not be able to continue beyond December 30th, when you would need additional items and supplies more than likely because this is going on much longer than people anticipated and then at much higher levels. That's, that was my thought of why you would need money over a longer period of time.
I mean, in my mind, I would think it's absolutely logical that they should extend the date. But like I say, you know, that's what I think is logical and what, you know, if and when that may occur, that I really can't respond to.
Okay.
Another thing that was mentioned on the call is that the lobby of the police police station is currently closed and Jerry did bring up, she created a form to, to give to all the departments to log when people come in, whether it's service people or anybody that comes in, because there have been instances, you know, throughout our area where, you know, you have people like went to service something in town hall or committee members and then subsequently you find out that they test positive. It's very difficult to case trace unless you have that information. So that information will be confidential and also be destroyed when it's no longer needed after a period of time. But I would just encourage people that are on committees and also department heads, like the senior center, to really seriously limit people in town hall right now. If there's an opportunity to sign things outside or whatever, it's, you know, especially in the next month, I just think that going through the holidays, it's going to be worse than it is now. And, you know, I've been, you know, going into work every day in healthcare and in March, it was, it was horrendous. It was information coming at you constantly. It was not enough PPE. It's going to painting contractors and, you know, big, you know, Lowe's Home Depot to try to get PPE for everybody. Now it's exhaustion. Everybody, you know, it's just, you have to really keep up, keep up and being vigilant. So I just encourage everybody to do that. I'm trying to, I'm trying to encourage everybody I work with to be vigilant and to stay, stay, you know, follow the guidelines, like don't give up. It's, it's, everyone's more indoors now and I can tell you that the numbers are, we're back at the hospital where I am, back where we were, I'm sad to say. So please, everybody be safe through the holidays. With that, we'll talk about plowing, speaking of winter.
Yes, and we did receive one response to our request for quotes for the plowing of the municipal parking lots and the clearing of sidewalks that are municipally owned land. It's from RJM Landscaping, Inc., which is the company that has been doing this in the past, both at Norris School and here and at the locations for the sidewalk clearing, which is here on Route 10. There's the property that we acquired a year ago on Palmeroy Meadow Road for water protection that needs clearing and the steps here at the town hall and the sidewalks here at the town hall and also the sidewalk in front of the police station. So they have submitted. Signed Form A, a quotation form, which includes their references, that they have been in business for a minimum of five years, that they are located within 15 miles of Southampton Center. And their quote for ice melt on town hall stairs, entrances, walks per bag supplied for fiscal year 21, 22, and 23 is $36 per bag. Clear stairs, entrances, walks at town hall for the, for all three of the fiscal years. It's $250 per visit. Clear municipal sidewalks at town hall, it's, is included in that $250 per visit for all three fiscal years. Clear municipal sidewalks at the police station for all three municipal years. It's $75 per visit. Clear the municipal sidewalk located at Conan Park for all three fiscal years. It's $125 per visit. Clear municipal sidewalks on Glendale Road, $300 per visit for all three of the fiscal years. And clear the municipal sidewalks for Palmeroy Meadow Road. It's $200 per visit for all three fiscal years. And then snow removal and ice control at William E. Norris Elementary School. Cost per services on a per storm basis for each of the following sites. Solid William E. Norris Elementary School. And for all three fiscal years, if the storm is from one to less than three inches, it's $1,565 per storm. If it is three inches to less than six inches, it's $2,350 per storm. For six, if the storm is six inches to less than nine inches, it is $3,525 per storm. If the storm is from nine inches to less than 12 inches, it's $5,285 per storm. And if it's greater than 12 inches, it's $100 per inch. They have returned the signed completed Form A, which is the quotation form. They have completed the tax compliance certification. They have completed the contractor information and reference sheet. And the package is complete and we have a copy of their certificate of liability insurance.
Ed, do you know how these rates compare to last year's?
Yeah, they're actually very similar.
Are we surprised that we didn't get more than this bid? I would have thought we would have gotten at least a competitive bid.
You know, I've said this before, I think some of the issues are we bury these bids so deep on the homepage, nobody can see them.
Well, in this, in this case, Randall did send them out to four contractors that he knew were in the 15-mile radius. So.
Okay. But still, they should be right on the homepage, big, bold, you know. When we bury them, I have to search to find them and I know they're there. And that's, yeah. And the money, I hate to say, from one to three inches, I'm not remembering the exact number, say $2,000 at Norris. From three to six, it goes like to 3,000 or so. I mean, the difference between this and this to plow it is the same equipment in the same timeframe, you know?
Well, except it's return trips a lot of times. So it might be one trip for one size storm, it might be two or three for another.
But that's, that's not what they're saying, no, you know?
Yeah, it is.
Is it, it's per storm, not per trip?
Right, exactly.
Right. But if there's six inches down there where they, they do it, they only do it once.
They might have to do it twice.
Not necessarily. If school's closed, they just do it to open it up for the next day. That's all. They don't go in the morning because the school's closed.
What if the school isn't closed, John?
Well, that's a different one. But I mean, the sense is you get hit with that $3,000 charge or whatever it is, no matter what. It's kind of, I hope you have that money in the budget because that's going to be expensive for a bad winter.
And the amount on Palmero Meadow, that's in front of the new, the new watershed protection area there, that, that just that strip of sidewalk there, that was like $200 or something?
$200 per visit, correct.
Yeah.
Which is like, if my memory is correct, I think it's like either 1300 or 1400 feet.
What would you like to do?
We're getting close to, you know, potential snow. So I don't know if we could hold our, you know, and wait, hope that we get others, even though deadline is submissions.
Do we have to sign a multi-year contract, Ed, or can we just do it for one year?
We put it out as a three-year contract.
But do we have the option?
No.
Personally, I think we should go out a lot sooner next year and publicize it properly and get more bids. I mean, it's a lucrative business, snowplowing. There's a lot of people out there.
So why don't we have an option, Ed?
We didn't put one in. We actually specifically made it as a three-year contract. So we had someone basically to do this and locked in for a period of time.
I, I don't know if this person on the phone is trying to speak, but anyway, so we're locked in because we put it in the RFQ?
Right, it was bid as a three-year contract.
I, I would say we go back and talk to the company, see if we can do a one-year contract. Because the rates are the same for all three years, so doing one year.
Which I think is an advantage because if you bid it going into the future, I think you're going to see a cool escalation on it.
I, I don't know. Again, anytime you bid something like this, like road sale, you do this in November, you know, everybody's already got their businesses filled up right now. Same with plowing. And when we did it for the, for the state, we did it in June so people could book us in their schedule and give us, you know, multiple quotes. So my recommendation is we go back to them, see if we can do one year and revisit it next year earlier and publicize it more.
I, I know, Ed, you said these were similar rates that we paid last year. Were we contracted with them in previous years? That we have a multi-year contract?
Yeah.
Okay.
It wasn't multi-year, no.
Do you have the old rates in front of you, Ed, or it's just from memory?
Just from memory.
Well, it's, for me, I feel like it's late. We, you know, we put it out as a three-year and if Randall did contact, you know, and Randall's happy with it and he contacted, you know, four people within the, I mean, 15-mile radius, not that, that far. I'm just really nervous about putting it off. We're already, we're already, you know, midway through November.
Would, would it hurt to give a call to the company and see if they'd willing to do it one year? And we could get that done quickly, I would think.
Well, if they say no, we're back to square one.
Well, then we have to accept this, I suppose, but.
Correct.
Is there a cancellation clause in this contract, Ed?
Well, it would be our standard contract, so hang on a second.
I'm kind of in between. I sort of feel too, if Randall has reached out and tried to give it to people and nobody's responded, I don't know what we do. It could be that people though realize that we've used this company before and they don't feel like, you know, they've got an advantage to try and bid too. So they might not have wanted to bid because they know that this is our past contractor. But I think we're getting late to try and, you know, you know, not to do something.
What I was going to say before is, you know, if you're a plowing company or something like that, you've already got your accounts lined up because people come to you earlier. So a lot of companies may not have room at this point in time. So going to them in June, you know?
Yeah, I see your point. I mean, I think our challenge would be, John, and correct me if I'm wrong, but if we advertise this as a three-year and we go into them now and say, look, we, we really want to only do one year. I mean, I think they're going to think that that's been an unfair advertising, won't they?
Or we could just not award it and then go back and redo it. But yeah, you've got a point, Chris. You know, somebody may bring that up.
I mean, I think it, it opens a door for us to be, you know, having a dispute with somebody. I mean, I just think we're, I agree with you, we're late now. I mean, here we are almost the end of November. So to not have a, a contract in place, I think is not, not in our favor, given the weather.
I guess I'm, I'm concerned if we have a bad winter, this is going to take our budget and, you know, just kill it.
Well, yeah.
Well, that exists anytime you have a bad winter.
Yeah.
Yeah, but if you start off with a contract, that's expensive to begin with, you know?
Well, like I say, this is where we've been for long before I came here, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Other than breach of contract, I don't immediately see anything in here for any other termination reason.
Yeah, I guess going forward, that's something we should have in there, a clause that, you know, if it's a budgetary reason or another reason, we're able to cancel a penalty.
Hey, John, when I came here, the town didn't even use contracts.
Or we're improving it, but we can always improve more, right?
Absolutely. You get to tweak me.
Well, I'm not tweaking you, I'm just the document.
No, well, I brought the document over with me, so.
Oh, okay. Consider yourself tweaked.
Thank you.
Okay, folks, what would you like to do?
I honestly don't see where we have an option. It's so late, we haven't had anyone else interested in, you know, proposing to do the work.
And so far as I understand, people haven't been unhappy with the service. I know Randall hasn't been, so.
No, they've done a, you know, good job both, you know, I can say here and they seem to have done a good job at Nora School. I mean, anytime I've had any issues here and contacted, you know, Randall about, you know, if they could, you know, come back because it was snowing heavy and we still had an open town hall, you know, they were back here in no time to clear the stairs again. Or, you know, or if I had an issue where we had opened up and were closing early and I wanted to get the stairs cleaned or the area around the stairs, so people could get to their cars, they were back here and, you know, very promptly to take care of that. So I have, in, you know, the two and a half years I've been here, I have not heard any, you know, complaints or issues about their work.
I think we probably need to move forward. I don't see that we've got too much ground to stand on at this late date, unfortunately.
Yeah, no, I agree with you.
You know, I mean, I think we did our best to try and at least open it up and if nobody responded, well, that's their loss, I guess. But I guess I'm confident in Randall having reached out and that's where we need to put our trust, is in the highway super to make the contact. And if nobody decided to apply, then that's what we've got of these guys and they seem to have done a good job, so let's go again.
Like that could be a motion, Chris?
Sure. Yeah, I'll move that we go ahead and enter into the contract for the municipality property, snowplowing and clearing and whatever with the RJM company, is that right?
Yes. RJM Landscape.
Okay, RJM Landscape.
I'll second it.
Okay, Chris, and then Francine. Is there any other questions, comments?
I think what Chris has said is right. There's nowhere else to go, so we need to go forward with it.
All in favor?
Dishman, I.
Foul's I.
Bart, I.
Roland, I.
Groden, I. Next is the interim town accountant position update.
Yes, and for the interim or the town accountant position update?
Yeah.
The town accountant, right?
Well, the agenda, yes, I'm sorry, I'm jumping over for some reason, yes. Town accountant position update, interim is next.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure I gave you the right one for the right one. To date, we have not received any applications for the permanent town accountant position.
Okay, so let's talk about the next agenda item, we'll do them together. How about interim?
The interim town accountant position, we did receive one application for that and I sent it along to John since the board voted to have John and I work together on that.
I think I've got it too. Yeah.
Did you?
Yeah.
Okay.
Everybody get it?
Yeah, I got it.
Yes.
Okay. And so we have received one on, for the interim, haven't really, other than with the temporary agencies, only received that one candidate, which was the one that was $52 per hour. So still pursuing that. And I have reached out to see if anyone of our, some of our surrounding towns might have a town accountant that's looking to pick up more hours. I've also reached out to our auditing firm and the DLS to see if they might have any list of retired town accountants that they know of that fill in temporarily. I did get a tip on one agency that specializes in this. They are located out in central to eastern Mass, but they do, they do do a lot of it remotely. So that's another option and we actually may, if I may, might suggest, think about maybe taking a twofold or two-pronged effort here, since we still have to finish closing the fiscal year 2020 books and move forward with setting our tax rate. I was thinking of, if the board would let me, reaching out to the one vendor that I had been advised, does a very good job and does several communities around us, to see if they might be able to do the portion of, that's needed to close our fiscal year 20 books and do everything that is required to get the information to DLS to set our fiscal year 21 tax rate and then look at possibly hiring someone as the interim town accountant to do the everyday aspect of the job of entering, entering the payroll warrants, or not the payroll warrants, but entering the vendor payable warrants and approving the payroll warrants and doing the postings and also doing what I would call the bi-monthly reports for expenses and revenues.
Do we have a sense of how long it might take to do the paperwork to close out the fiscal year? I mean, what are we talking about in terms of somebody's effort to do that?
If we find somebody that has experience with that, I really don't think it would take more than a couple of weeks to do that. Question is, can, you know, can we find somebody that's available that can do it for us?
Well, you mentioned a vendor that you are accustomed to working with. That vendor, it would be probably a couple of weeks?
I would think so. If you'd like me to, I'm happy to reach out to them, see if they have any availability and, you know, get an estimate of, you know, how long they thought it might take to finish closing the books and getting that information to DLS and what it might cost.
And Jen is on the phone. What is your drop dead date, Jen, for getting the tax rate?
She sent it to me.
You're muted.
You can unmute yourself, but I believe it is either December 14th or 15th.
Whoa.
Jen, go ahead.
We have to have the legal file into the software company by December 16th, the latest. But the tax rate will have to be set well before that. I mean, really, we should set our tax rate. I don't even, in the, we have to close the books, then they have to certify free cash. I'm not.
Well, we don't necessarily have to certify free cash this time.
Okay.
Because we're not, we won't touch free cash again until we have either a special town meeting again or, or the annual.
Okay, so we wouldn't need to get it certified to set the tax rate? Is that what you're saying?
You're correct.
Okay, because that's just usually the, the schedule, but if it doesn't have to be done that way every time, I'm not sure. Ed, do you know who I've had the name of the company?
No, I've got it downstairs, but I don't remember it.
Because I work with the company out of, with Goshen. I think it's Eric.
That's it.
Is that him?
Got it.
Yeah, so I work with them with Goshen.
Okay.
So we close there, I mean, they seem good, just if you, you know?
Well, I actually, I actually got a recommendation for them out of two different sources that I think highly of, so.
Yeah, it's hard, you know, to work with them on a day-to-day basis, but I think to close the books, it's good. Otherwise, day-to-day, you literally have to scan everything to them. It's so much nicer to have an in-house accountant, in my opinion, but that's.
In this case, I think, you know, getting it done sooner rather than later is better.
Yeah, right now, yeah.
Was there something that was holding that up from happening before Vicki left? I thought that was one of the hopes that we had.
We were hoping to have that done and closed before she left, but there was a few things that she hadn't completed.
Okay. I mean, Vicki and I were fully balanced. As far as I was aware, we were ready to submit our reports like into Gateway. I think she was nervous about leaving and then them not being able to contact her with questions and there would be no one to answer them. I don't think she wanted to, you know, just sign off on those and not be able to respond to them if there were any issues.
Well, I can't see how the current situation is better, but.
Yeah, it's not good, but that's what, that's how she felt.
Yeah, well, there's, you know, there's still the same people in place to answer the questions, whether it was done before or after. So anyway, I think all the above. I think we need to interview, if John and Ed can interview the interim person who's interested, she seems to have a lot of experience. And also, I certainly would support hiring this vendor. Both of you have worked with them before and I think we definitely have to, as soon as possible, set the tax rate. So I think I would support both of those things happening and hopefully your calls out to some local towns will get the word out. Is there anything else we can and should do?
I can't think of anything off the top of my head, but I think moving forward, especially if we can get a, you know, a vendor and accounting firm in here to help us close those fiscal year 20 books is a big step forward.
Okay.
And Ed, set up a time that we can interview the applicant, let me know and we'll go from there.
Sure, I'll reach out to you and find out what your schedule is.
Okay.
Tammy's got her hand up.
Yeah, she has her hand up, yeah.
Tammy?
Camerilla's 298 College Highway. Does that mean then that if we have sent emails to the town's accountant email and we've given them the information that we would normally be doing, there's nobody picking that up and we're doing the checks or anything?
If you sent it, when, when did you send it?
It was recent, just last week, I did an email, but the week before that, I put something in the payment box to be done.
I'll look in the.
Didn't know she was gone.
The payment box, we check, so we've got that. The email, probably not.
Okay. All right, thank you.
So if you, if you just resend that to me, please, Tammy.
Do you have access to her email inbox, Ed?
I'm, I will go in and forward it to myself.
Okay. There might be some others.
Right.
Are people in general agreement to hire a vendor to close the books and get going with setting the tax rate? So maybe we can have a motion to approve Ed to contact them and, and get that going so that doesn't have to wait until our next meeting? Are people comfortable with, with moving that forward?
Yes.
As long as we don't give them an open checkbook, we should have some estimates of costs.
Yep.
Okay. So I think we should have a motion then to approve Ed to hire a vendor to close the books.
Yes, I'll move for that, but with the stipulation that John raised, that we have some understanding that there'd be some, you know, it can't be $10,000, that there'd be some.
Well, there is an accountant line.
Some feeling there.
Yeah, I don't know, is that we have the time to micromanage this, though? We're going to have to put this in the hands of Ed and/or John. I mean, we're not meeting for another two weeks, we've got to get this done. So like, I agree that we can't be spending money, but like, we can't, unless we're going to have a meeting.
No, I'm just, I'm just saying that there be some, some estimate of what it's going to cost before he engages them.
Well, then he would have to make that discretionary call unless you want to hold a meeting to hear the number to make a decision on it.
I agree, but I still think it's worth asking the question, anyone.
Yeah.
We don't have to decide on it, but I think that puts them on notice that we're not, you know, we don't have a blind check here.
Your motion is approving it to go ahead, but getting a cost estimate that he feels is reasonable before approving it, is that?
That's it.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it. And one thought, somebody had said, well, we got the accountant line. One thing we've got to be careful of is every, whatever we spend out of that line, we won't have left in the budget to hire a new accountant, so we've got to be cognizant of that too.
Correct.
Right. We're not currently paying against that line. All right, so we have a motion, we have a second. Any further questions, comments?
Who did the second?
I did.
Oh, thanks, John.
No further? All in favor?
Dishman, I.
Foul's I.
Roland, I.
Bart, I.
And Groden, I. Okay, so the person that applied for the interim, John, you and Ed will work together and interview them and.
We'll set up a Zoom interview as soon as possible.
Yep, sounds good. And as an emergency appointment, you don't need to have approval of, I mean, if it was, it was decided to do as a, as an emergency, right? But, and that's good for what, two weeks and then the interim is three months?
Twelve weeks, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Sounds good. Any other comments about the accountant positions?
Do we have, do we have to authorize to hire on an emergency basis based on the outcome of that interview?
Well, emergency does not require the vote of this board.
Okay, fine, so we're done.
We have to bring the temporary.
Temporary, yes.
Yeah. Next, we're going to talk about the EMD posting. So I'll mention that. So we, I contacted both people that applied for the position. I let them know exactly where the payment stood, what the situation was, that it was CARES Act funding, that it was no guarantee that would go beyond the 30th of December, but that we hoped that it would be pushed out. We kind of applied for it, hoping that it would go to the end of June and what the amount of it was and just made it really clear that there's no guarantee of funding beyond what we currently have and they're maybe giving his opinion in terms of. And they're maybe giving his opinion in terms of the position and funding and so forth. Both of them expressed an interest at the phone call on Monday with Jerry and the chiefs, Ed and I. We had a discussion about it. I encouraged them to write letters of support. We discussed the applicants, and our plan will be to have it on the agenda for December 1st and present a recommendation. So between now and then, next week, Ed and I will have a conversation with both of the applicants. And then for December 1st, we'll make a recommendation and just, and appoint a EMD on December 1st.
Sounds good.
Any questions about that? All righty, the next, Ed, you want to add anything to that?
No, you covered it all.
Okay, the Greenway project, so we, I got an email about, I thought I saw a dollar amount on this, but I guess not. But I got an email about, it was from someone that was encouraging us to apply for this Mass Trails grant, and the deadline is the end of February. So I just wanted to make sure that I put it on the agenda for this particular meeting.
Yeah, and I think it was something through Department of Transportation, right? And, and the idea was, we had, we had run into Lindsay Sabadosa somewhere, and we had brought it up to her attention. And she checked into it, and she thought that the funds could be used possibly to help us do the purchase of the railway, the rail bed thing? Is that what I understood?
Yeah, I guess, well, I want to, I want to bring this to your attention, since there has been discussion regarding the Southampton Greenway project, Mass dot numbers 607823. Amanda confirmed that these funds may be used for ROW acquisition. Please contact Amanda for specific questions, but this looks like a good opportunity for your town. And it's 2021 Mass Trails grant. The deadline for submission is Monday, February 1st.
Yeah.
So given what we just heard tonight about master plan and everything else, this seems like a great opportunity. So the question is, Chris, do you want to give some thought and Matt and Ed about, you know, does this, you know, belong sort of in the hands of the Greenway group or the Parks group or, you know, open space? I mean, it seems like an opportunity.
Yeah, well, we're gonna have our, our grant meeting on Thursday, so Ed and I can take a look at it then, I think. You know, there, there's also the legislation that's pending, though, right? It's a separate legislation about having the, the money be available eventually, maybe through CPC if some legislation got changed. So there's that, but no matter what, we're gonna need funds for, you know, design and, and all sorts of things, so.
Well, the, the other thing is with the Mass Trails grant, that we're gonna have to come up with a 20% match.
Right.
Roughly $70,000 to $74,000. So. It, it still has the same restriction on it for CPC funds as it does as an outright purchase. So currently, unless that legislation passes for allowing us to use CPC funds on a right-of-way rail banking incidents, we would not be able to apply to CPC for that $70,000 to $74,000 match. So we would have to come up with that somewhere else, whether that be through capital funds or whatever.
Yeah, and some of that, like the Mass Trails grant that Concom just got, or we just got through for the, the manhattan, you know, work down there. I think a lot, large part of that 20% match is, is also gonna be volunteer labor as well as, as well as some other funds. But, so some of that can be charged in as volunteer labor on certain things as well. But yeah, you're right, that would be a huge chunk to try and cover. But yeah, we, we can certainly talk about, but it's, at least it's a little bit farther out, so we don't have to rush to it. But yes, it's, it's on the radar screen.
Okay, good.
Any idea when that legislation might go through approving CPC funds?
Well, no, I mean, we have brought it again to Lindsay's attention, and she knows about it.
Yeah. Yeah, I know, I know it came up about a week ago, and I can't remember if it was in the closeout budget for fiscal year 20 or not. And I didn't hear, we didn't hear anything back on that it had passed, so.
Yeah.
So aside from the funding aspect of it, the very first next step as far as the Greenway is what? Acquiring the actual?
The right, the right-of-way for.
Right-of-way.
Okay. As a purchase or as a rental?
The rail banking, the purchase, yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I, I still, I still call it a purchase, because the chances of a railroad, whether it's 10 years or 75 years from now, saying, we actually want to take that back and reuse it. I'd, I'd probably rather go, go to McHégansun and put my entire retirement down on the roulette wheel or, or something than, than I think. As far as the probability goes. However, you know, I know the DOR, as far as Community Preservation Funds, looks at it and says, no, you can't use Community Preservation Funds under the, the current legislation because of the fact that that is a possibility, so you're not really acquiring it.
Yeah, because the railroad would, would have a reversionary interest in it, even if it's 99 years down the road. So it's, it's not technically an outright ownership right now, and that's why that legislation is so important.
And, and one of my understandings is that the other community, and I forget, I think it was Sudbury that was pushing for it, actually got a town meeting vote to come up and put up their, their own municipal money to do their acquisitions. So my understanding is they aren't pushing for it anymore. So it, it makes it more of a long shot for that legislation to pass.
Okay, we'll have to keep this on the radar, though, especially given what we heard tonight. I think that keeping the Greenway front and center, I think, is a good thing to do.
Yeah, and from, and from my understanding, you know, if, if the Southampton were to apply for that Mass Trails grant, if we can find a way to come up with our match, my, my understanding is we would have a very high probability of actually receiving it. Because my understanding is that Massachusetts Transportation is now looking at this as being a very key piece of connecting what goes north from here into East Hampton and North Hampton and up to connecting it to Westfield and having one continuous rail trail that goes all the way down into Connecticut.
Right.
Okay, Chris, so maybe you can keep us in the loop, but you may want to add this as one of the pending agenda items since it's such a strong interest in town. Okay, next is 29 Cottage Avenue.
Yes, and this is back on here just for an update. The house has been demolished, taken down, what have you. So that's a good thing. They are moving forward, but Charlie Konecki let us know that the cellar hole is still there and open. It seems that the property owner still wants to move forward with it, but has asked for a little more time to remove the block and fill in the cellar hole. His intent is to build a new house on that site. So he, you know, turned around and has asked for some more time to comply. And that would mean that we would have to go back into court for a little bit of expense and ask for a, you know, continuance until December 30th. So I put it on here not only as an update that they are making process, progress there, but also that the town will basically have a little bit of cost to, you know, go back in in front of the court and ask for the continuance through December 30th. So I'd like to ask the select board for an authorization for another $400 or $500 for KP Law to do that for the Board of Health.
I have a question. If the demolition wasn't done satisfactorily, and now they have to go in and take more time to fill in and demolish the, the actual cellar and probably do something with that oil tank, whatever, why do we end up having to appeal for an extension of the, why are we paying for it?
Well, if, if we, if we, the, the property owner seems to be complying. The Board of Health is satisfied with what he has done so far and with moving forward. It's just a question of whether we would have to ask for a continuance, that they'll be in non-compliance, and we'll be back in court with a non-compliance, and it'll end up costing us more.
We can't pass on those expenses to the, the person that requires the continuance?
Not that I'm aware of.
Where does this, where, where does our legal budget stand since we cut it so much?
I'd have to go ta, take a, a look. I am very, shall we say, cautious with the legal budget. My recollection is we've already spent just about $2,500 on this of what I think was a $25,000 or $26,000 budget. I'd be concerned if we were going back into court and having to spend another $1,500 or $2,000. But to keep this moving forward, get it done, and get it back on the tax rolls for $400 or $500, I would say that's a worthwhile investment.
So if, if we extended this until December 30th, and the homeowner still does not comply, then what?
Then we'd have to go back into court with a non-compliance order. And at that point in time, I would probably suggest that we also serve them with a motion for legal fees.
Should you put a lien on?
Right.
Okay.
And so just to be clear, that the extension of time would allow him to do what again? Sorry?
Basically, this gives him, would give him additional time to get his, you know, vendors or contractors in there to remove the block from that cellar foundation and to fill in that, that cellar hole. So it's not there and it's not dangerous.
So he's paying for that, though?
He's paying for that now. He's, he's paid for the demolition so far.
Yeah.
Which has been done, right.
So we're just paying our legal fees to do the continuance?
Correct.
Okay.
Somebody want to make a motion?
So just a question, is this a nuisance property at this point, because there's a cellar hole still there and everything, or?
I don't know if it would classify as nuisance or not, John.
We're giving him an extra month to fill it in, so just concern on that.
Well, I don't know if you saw Charlie's email, but they insisted upon putting a chain link fence around instead of one of those yellow ones, I mean, orange ones. And so I think the Board of Health is on it in terms of making sure that it's, you know, safe and that it's gonna, you know.
It's, but it's safe, right.
That's good. So I guess for $400 or $500, they'll make a motion that we allow an additional $500 for the continuance to December 30th.
I'll second it.
Okay, John, and then Chris?
Chris?
Any other questions, comments? All in favor?
Foul's I.
Roland, I.
Mark, I.
And Groden, I. Jen, I'm just wondering, was it your hope that we would cover some of the PCFs? Are you fine hanging on?
Oh, I'm fine. I was just, you know, watching.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, I mean, we can jump ahead if, if, if your, your time is tight, but I just want to double check.
Yeah, I'm okay, I don't really.
We'll keep moving then.
Okay.
Conservation Commission fees?
Yeah, I, I put this back on here because the Conservation Commission had asked the select board to approve the, I think it was a $300 fine per day to be added to their fee schedule, which the bylaw would allow to be done. And I checked with KP Law and. Because it's a fine, it really isn't a fee. So it really doesn't belong in the section that they had. In the section that they had asked to have it added to. So I'm working with Michelle Rendazzo on the proper way to basically approve that fine, whether that be in the bylaw or rules or regulations of the Conservation Commission or what have you. But I just wanted to bring that back up, so you didn't think that it was forgotten about. And I did, I'd also let Marla know for the conservation end.
Good. And, as, as a question, would that be more appropriate? Maybe if it were a bylaw, would it be in that non-criminal disposition one?
Actually, rather than via bylaw, I'm, I'm thinking rules and regulations.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, so.
Any other questions about that? Okay, then IT status updates?
Yeah, this one I haven't completed as of yet with everything I've had on my plate. So I have, they've actually done some work for us, and I've talked to them. But I, I really want to sit down and go through that server and, the old server and the new server and get a, a full understanding of what's going to go on when they bring it in and how, how many departments we could move over at one time and how many could stay on the old server and have them both running. So I am hoping to do that at the end of this week or the beginning of next week.
And how about last committee meeting? We appointed a ad hoc technology committee. Is there plans for that group to meet?
Yeah, hopefully, they're getting sworn in. I will check with Lucy, but she wasn't in last week. So we just sent the, Judy sent out the, the appointment slips to everyone, asking them to make an appointment to come in and be sworn in just yesterday. So once they are all sworn in, we'll get together and have an initial meeting for them.
Yeah, just, just strikes me that, you know, if, if possible, if they are, or some of them are sworn in, if there is somebody on there, and I, I forget all the resumes, but if there's somebody on there that had that server and storage background, it might be good to have them, you know, kind of go through that with you so that, you know, they may have some other perspective that, that could help us out.
Yep. Good point.
And then just tying in with that, I know in the CARES Act, we had put in for the, the laptops and the docking stations for the town hall?
Yes, for the department.
Did that get okayed, or do we know?
None of that, none of that has been okayed as of yet. That, that's all part of that round two application.
They're not gonna make it easy for us, are they?
No, no, and, and, and I was talking with another town administrator from. No, no. And, and, and I was talking with another town administrator from another town around here and he said, yeah, they're making it extremely difficult for all towns to spend the money, get, get stuff in and spend the money by December 30th.
Besides the refrigerator, did we get any flat out denials?
No, no flat out denials.
Okay. Okay, if there's no other questions about the IT status, we'll go on to the Old Town Hall envelope study. We got a document in our packet about that from the Hill.
Yes, and like, they, they have been here. They have done the work to measure the rooms in the building and take photographs and they actually flew a drone on the outside and they are working on the actual written report, which I expect to be back to us in about two weeks. And I did, I did send out that initial proposal as you had asked, so you could see that the services that were included in there.
Okay.
So they had come out and visited earlier and they've just, they've just picked it back up again? They were delayed because of the COVID stuff?
We, we had actually delayed them originally with the COVID stuff and I had, I had asked the, and I goes, okay, you know, do you, do you feel comfortable with having a vendor in here? And at the time, they really didn't. So we picked it back up in, in September.
Great.
Any questions about that? Okay, short-term, long-term disability vendor response?
You skipped, you skipped another one, Reedy.
Oh, thank you. I don't know what's going on tonight. I'm just like.
You're in a hurry to get through.
I was gonna say, Reedy's trying to help us get through quickly.
Madison Avenue. So this was Crystal Kane, one of the resident had sent an email out saying that the property across the, speech from her at Madison Avenue was not developable and she was inquiring about purchasing it. So we encouraged last time people to go buy the property and take a look at it. And so Ed, what's the update on this land? Is, I think it's valued at $21,000?
Think it might be 22, but it's right in that, in that area. But yeah, at, at the last meeting, the board had asked if I could send out the, the assessor's tax map showing where it was. So I, I sent that out to the board and it's also included in the packet here back with the property record card, just so everybody, you know, knew where, knew where it was if they wanted to go look at it.
And it's definitely non-buildable lot.
It is definitely a non-buildable lot because it doesn't have the required 40,000 square feet.
But if they, if they got a variance?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna say this straight out, okay, is under no conditions should the ZBA give a variance to build on a, an undersized lot because once the ZBA does that, they have established the standard for anyone else to come in and also request and build on an undersized lot. And if they denied it to somebody else, that person has the right and would probably win a lawsuit against the town for that.
Well, I'm gonna throw a wrinkle out here because I did go by and take a look at it, just drove by. And I guess what strikes me, and I, it kind of tied in with a, a following Board of Assessors meeting, and I brought it up then to the assessors meeting just to find out, and if I could anymore about the assessed value of that 21, 22,000 because it seemed a little bit high to me for a non-buildable lot. And they were, we just took a quick look at the map that day and didn't go into any detail, but it does look like it has enough frontage. But you're right, it doesn't have the depth to be right now to conform, but I don't believe this would be the first one in town that has not had the right measurements to be a lot. My thought, and I'm just throwing it out here, would be that for a change, we actually have some town-owned property that rather than getting rid of it, we talk about, and you've heard some of the comments from the master plan survey, we've been talking about affordable housing, if this were at all possible for something to be attractive to a developer who would not have to pay the cost of the property to be able to build some affordable housing on or to get a Habitat for Humanity project or something, I'd just like to throw that out as an option rather than necessarily getting rid of it. Just as an option. We don't have to make any decisions, obviously, but I'm just, I'm just trying to think outside the box a little bit here because we, we have had such a challenge with developers who say that they can't afford to do that 10th unit. And, you know, you've heard some of the comments about people feeling like they can't afford to stay here. And, you know, this might be an experiment, maybe with a willing developer, if we could figure out the land size. I agree that that's a, that's an obstacle. So I'm not minimizing that, but I would just like to throw that out as a consideration.
And the other thing, same thing, Chris, going by it is if the butters, if a butter purchased the land and added a little of their own land to it, it would then become a building lot. So to me, it's worth, if I was in a butter, it'd be worth my money to keep that lot or try to buy that lot, even if I didn't want to develop it because in the future, you never know, you could kind of sliver out of your existing land, all of a sudden make it that 43,000 square feet, whatever it needs. And there you go. So for $22,000, you bought a $1,000 lot, you know?
That's a good point, John. And, and isn't there, I mean, we're under our, I don't know whether it's a requirement on the community preservation, there is, there are funds there for housing.
Oh, yeah.
Not been able to use, apparently, you know, the state had issued some kind of a, of a, I guess, not a ruling, but, but a recommendation. And I think Southampton is part of the master plan subscribed to like a 10%, right? Am I right?
I believe we're supposed to have.
Affordable housing.
10% of, yeah, and we're nowhere near.
We're nowhere.
We're not even 1%. I don't believe.
So all, all of this, all of this would fit in very nicely were to go in that direction.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't know what's feasible, but I just wanted to throw out just, just thinking differently and see if there's not necessarily something else that could be investigated a little bit more fully before we decide perhaps to put it on the market. That's all.
If, if we sold that for the value of it, it was just undeveloped land, it's not going to help our tax rolls much. So to your point, Chris, maybe holding onto it and seeing what we can do in the future makes sense.
Yeah.
No, I think that I, I definitely support everything that's been said. I wonder whether or not in a broader context, it would be worth like the assessors giving us some information about where exactly in our town is the taxed owned land. Because I don't really support changing a zoning thing, but like John said, I mean, there might be an opportunity for a butters to actually stay within the existing zoning bylaws, but I'd be curious to see, I mean, I, I would feel badly because here we had a resident calling up and asking to purchase a land for the purpose of keeping it undeveloped and we're discussing developing it. But nonetheless, because of that, and just in general, it would be interesting to see exactly on a map, where is the town, town-owned land? And there would be, would there be other opportunities that might, you know, further, I don't know if the assessors would be able to do that easily enough, but it would be interesting to see if the same sort of direction could be taken in some lot that might be better suitable.
Yeah. Okay.
You know, one thought, and I was thinking about that the other day, and hopefully I got the details 100% correct, but back a few years ago, there was a parcel of land with an old dilapidated building or house on it, ham and pots, and then the butter wanted to buy it, to clean it up and just keep it land. I believe in the end, and I forget who did it, it turned into a building lot and there's a house on that right now. So, you know?
You never know.
You always got to think about the future.
Yeah. And how much money did we give away by doing it one way versus the other, you know? I, I'd be fine for thanking the neighbor for her interest, but at this point saying that we would, we still want to consider our options and go from there.
Yeah. I think that would be, I, I would also support that, John, is to get back to this particular person. If you want, I'm happy to write something back to her, Ed, and just say that we're possibly in the process of evaluating all of the town-owned property and that right now we're not going to be, you know, taking any movement towards selling until we have a broader view of what's, what we own and something like that.
Yeah. We think if we sell, we'll blow it out the public bid anyways and everybody will have the same opportunity.
Yeah, right. Okay, I'll write back to her and just let her know that we talked about it and that's where it stands right now. Okay, now we can talk about short-term, long-term disability.
And the deadline for proposals was at 2:00 this afternoon and we did not receive any.
Wow.
No.
Oh, my.
Yeah.
You would have to put out that information for the vendors that they wanted on that demographics.
But, you know, I, I will, I will say, I did talk to John and let, let him know this afternoon and he, he asked me, because we did have one company ask some questions about it and we had posted them on the website. So he asked, he goes, you know, he asked me if I knew why they didn't submit anything on it. So I, I reached out to the individual and, you know, I, I had wondered this in the back of my mind, but with the, basically the RFP we had put out, we put the RFP on our website for people to find and then once anyone, vendors asked questions by a certain amount of time, we developed responses to those questions and we posted them on the website. So I, I, I reached out and emailed the person that had asked the original questions and got a, a response back that he didn't realize that, you know, the responses would be, were, were going to be posted on the website and that he was, hadn't actually anticipated, you know, a, a direct response, you know, from us. So and, and he went further into it. He, he said, you know, we do, we do get companies or entities that, you know, reach out and, you know, we'll ask them for the census data and, you know, they won't provide us with, with anything, you know, at all and they, they just move on. So, I mean, he, he, you know, once he realized that, he was, I would stay still interested and, you know, he, he said, okay, well, you know, if for any reason you extend the bids, you know, or go out and bid it again, that, you know, just let them know and, you know, they would be interested as long as they could get that census data and trying to put something together for us.
Would, would you provide it? Who was it? Jen? Was it Jen that was helping with that or Lucy?
Well, I, I, I wouldn't say Jen was helping me with it. Jen did it for me. So, yeah.
So let me ask you a question before we decide to redo this again. Under chapter 30B, can we, since we've had a failed request, can we go out to speak directly with companies and get quotes on this without having to do a public bid, considering the dollar amount?
Well, I would have to check, but I can tell you that acquiring insurance, not ask, not asking for, you know, consulting on getting insurance, but actually acquiring insurance is exempt from chapter 30B.
Okay, so there's an avenue we can go in.
Right.
So I would say, go ahead.
I was gonna say, what about the company that came to talk to us?
Well, they didn't respond at all.
Yeah, that's interesting.
So, so let me further ask that question. So we want to inquire this insurance. Can we talk to multiple companies? That would be okay?
Yeah, I, I would think so. I mean, again, you know, we should be cautious about, you know, asking apples to apples rather than apples to oranges and, you know, if, if we get, you know, certain questions back or whatever, that we provide that same information to, you know, multiple companies.
Okay, so I would, I would say let's go forward with that format. You and I can work on it, get quotes, because we know what we want and we can present it to the one or two or three companies that are interested. They can give us a quote and if they have questions, we'll make sure all two or three of them get the questions. And that'll go much quicker and smoother than what we've been doing now.
Yeah. Yeah, I think the only, only thing, like you say, you've got to be careful of is if somebody asks questions, you've got to make the questions and answers known to everybody who's bidding on it. That's only fair, so.
With, with electronic means, we can document that to make sure.
Right, yeah.
Okay, well, if you both want to continue to work on it, I think that's great. I mean, I think we all agree for some time that that would be the way to go than to negatively impact any one department if somebody ends up, you know, on a short-term.
Sounds like this time the vendor just didn't realize that the information was out there. So do we need a motion for this or do we just, you and I work on it and come back?
I think we already sort of authorized both of you to, I don't, you know, I don't, I don't know if we're just to work on the proposal or whatever, but I'm, you know, happy to entertain that if you.
I'm okay. I'm okay if you, you guys are okay.
Okay. I think you'd be, you'd be bringing any kind of contract back anyway, right?
Oh, yeah. Absolutely. We would bring the quotes back. So Ed, if you just call me, we'll set up a time.
Sure.
Okay, thanks.
We're, we're gonna become best buds.
Yeah, really.
Okay, somebody's gonna have to buy somebody coffee here.
Yep.
You're helping with the IT and you're also helping with the accountant.
That's okay.
Thank you for that. So any other necessary business? I can't wait until the next Select Board meeting, which is December 1st? I have one question. Ed, is Kathy Ingram available to do minutes? Is that, is that something that will help you? I mean, I, I, if your administrative assistant there is looking at, we're having to watch it and then type it. I mean, she only works how many hours a week? It just seems like, it's just, you know, seems like a lot. Kathy could join a Zoom meeting and do minutes like she would normally do.
I'll reach out to Kathy and, and find out.
Okay, I think that would be a big help. I mean, there's no sense in you adding this to your list there. Okay, if there's nothing else, Francine, you want to go through the PCFs?
Okay, we have a couple. We have a personnel requisition form for an administrative clerk from the treasurer collectors department. The salary would be, the wage would be $16.95 per hour for a 30-hour week and it is a benefited position. Like it was approved by the PPPB at its last meeting. The next item is a personnel change form for administrative clerk, treasurer collector department as well. Christie Facto has been promoted to assistant treasurer collector, going to $18.99 per hour for a 31-hour work week and it also is a benefited position. And that was also approved by the PPPB. And that's it.
Okay. Is there a motion to accept those PCFs, PRFs?
I have a quick question. I'm sorry. Go, go. I'll come in when you have the discussion.
Okay.
I move to approve the PRF and the PCF for the treasurer collectors department.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Francine and then John. Chris, question?
Yeah, I just had a question. Under the, the position vacancy, okay, so we have the assistant clerk who's Christie's current position, if I'm right? And then the new position is going to be the assistant treasurer or the assistant to the treasurer?
It's assistant treasurer collector.
Okay, because on the, the position vacancy, it says administrative treasurer.
So I think they put in what her prior position was and what she was moving to. So they're.
Yeah, the position vacancy says administrative treasurer slash collector clerk.
Yeah.
And then administrative assistant is in the job description. So I was confused as to who was who.
Yeah, I don't have it in front of me, so I don't. Yeah, I don't have it in front of me, so I don't know exactly what you're, but.
We're getting Christie's replacement, this is a request for Christie's replacement.
Yes.
And then a promotion of Christie to the assistant to you, right?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
There's just a naming, I guess, that was confusing.
Jen, did you wanna say anything else about it?
No, not really, I think that, so Christie's been starting to do, you know, some of the duties of the position and she's doing a really, really good job. She's, you know, she's a fast learner, so I think she's going to be good for the position. I'm hoping that she'll stick around for a while, cause you know, it's always nice to have consistency and there's a lot to learn. So when someone leaves after a year, you know, you're just like, it's, it's hard to get someone new in again and start all over, you know? So hopefully she'll stick around, she does a really good job, she's a great worker, but yeah, that's it.
Anybody else?
Yeah, but it's good to see the promotion from within, so tell her congratulations from all of us.
Okay, great. All in favor?
Ish, bye.
All's eye.
All in eye.
Mark nigh.
Groden eye. And thank you, Jen.
Thank you.
And, and I'll put those forms in the select board mailbox in the break room when you're going by, if you'd stop and sign them please, Reenie.
Yeah.
And then while I said that, I would also remind all of the board members that will need at least three board members to call up and make appointments with Lucy to come in and sign those different sets of, for the poll hearing authorizations.
Okay, okay.
All right.
Now, is she here tomorrow on Thursday? Ed?
What's that?
Is she in tomorrow on Thursday?
As far as I know.
Okay. Okay, there are no license and permits, then we have warrants. Chris, you wanna read us the warrants?
Yep, we have a payroll warrant, P2120, in the amount of $295,803.46. And a payroll deduction warrant, PD2120, in the amount of $47,177.23.
All right, we got the details on that. Now, Paca, any questions on the warrants?
No.
Okay, so anything on the pending items? We talked about the Doers, Green Community Grant, we could probably take off the dog complaint. Anything on the charter building on the Clearwater Woodland boundary?
No.
Okay, we already talked about the meeting on the 1st to 15th of December, open time for the public, select board reserves a portion of the meeting for public comment and encourages participation. Anybody would like to speak from the public? All set? Are there any correspondences to read?
I have that one letter that I had sent out to the members. Date November 1st, 2020, to the select board and planning board. Innovative, dedicated, reliable, humble, these are just a few of the many words that describe our late husband and father, John V. Garska, past highway superintendent of 36 years in the town of Southampton. John was respected and admired, the man who built 60 miles of roadway in the town of Southampton, gave the town much to think about and much to replace when he announced his retirement in 1984. Chairman of the selectmen at the time, James D. Carey stated that we can't replace his skill, energy and enthusiasm, but we wish him nothing but the best because nobody deserves it more than John Garska. He dedicated his life to the town of Southampton, ensuring that roads, schools and housing developments were cleared in the wintertime, working through the night with very little manpower. In other reasons, other seasons, he'd spend time building and paving roads to the highest of quality. Former employee Frank Coletta mentioned that he is a tough man, a real perfectionist, but there isn't a better man to work for. John was innovative and creative. After countless hours spent building roads and vast amounts of blacktop wasted using a, uh, blacktop wasted using a grater and blade, he decided it was time for change. He invented an asphalt paving box, or the magic box, as it was commonly referred to, using materials found at the highway yard. The magic box helped to spread blacktop in a more efficient fashion, ensuring that roads were spread straight, smooth and level. In addition to the magic box, he also invented the patch pan, a device that hooked onto the back of a truck to make pothole filling safer. Ingenuities were used in several other communities. John was dependable and reliable. There is much to be said about a man who is hard to replace due to their remarkable and meticulous work ethic. Edward Ummel, selectmen at the time, mentioned if you have someone who did such a tremendous job and that you depended on, like we did with John, you hate to lose him. After announcing his retirement, many people in town felt that no one could immediately replace his experience and knowledge of the town's newly built or reconstructed roads, and they were correct. Even after retirement, he ensured that the town would remain in good hands and under his watchful eye, and here until they found a replacement for him. He continued to make himself available to the town, even after stepping out of his role as highway superintendent. Most of all, John was humble, anyone who was lucky enough to know him recognized that he was a quiet but hardworking man. He worked assiduously for the town and others while never asking for any favors in return. Therefore, we would be doing him an extreme disservice if we didn't ask him for something on his behalf. Upon the completion of the new bridge on East Street, we would be honored if you would consider naming the bridge after John V. Garska, providing that the bridge hasn't already been named. After all he has given to the town of Southampton, we feel that his name should be recognized and remembered for all he has done for the town that he loved and the town that loved him. Sincerely, the family of John Garska, Ms. Celia Garska, and Corinne Garska.
Very nice.
Yeah, nice, nice request.
Yeah, nice request.
Yeah, I think when we get to that point, that's consideration of naming the bridge, that would be something that we could put into the mix, but I don't think we commit to it right yet.
No, there's, there's a couple of things. Number one, has the bridge sometime already been named? Number two, is there a process anywhere in place in town that sets out how naming rights are given? So, yeah, yeah.
We have to figure that out.
Right, exactly.
I think it's good that we recognize the time via that letter.
Yeah, we've certainly done it, we've certainly done it with conservation properties.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a very nice letter and I'm certainly grateful for all he did. And yes, we'll have to discuss that. You know, when I was in the school committee at Hampshire Regional, they ended up continuing to name things after people, and they kept saying, well, well, we're gonna develop a policy so that we, like you said, you have guidance, because I think that there's a tendency to, you know, to move on certain things without having a broader view of it sometimes. So I would support looking into whether or not we have a, some guidance around naming in town. Do you know if there's a bylaw on that? No?
I don't remember seeing anything in the bylaws, but I will go back through them again.
Okay, all right.
We'll reassess to come up with something if there's nothing out there before we go forward with any naming.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it's a good thing to do, makes you more, a little bit more thoughtful.
Of course, we, we remember we, we named that little strip on Popery Meadow, Walunis Lane.
Way, way, way.
It wasn't big enough for a lane.
Well deserved, well deserved. Okay, so, thank you. At this time, then we'll close the meeting. We are planning on going into executive session and we will not be returning to open session for two items. The first is Master General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21, number two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-using personnel, town administrator. And secondly, well, actually, we're gonna move the second one to the first, Master General Law, Chapter 30A, 21, number two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiation with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-using personnel. So if I could have a meeting to, a motion to go into executive session?
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone. We'll see you all again.
Thanks, Debbie.
I'll make a motion where you adjourn the regular meeting, go into executive session. Not, not coming back into open session.
I'll second that.
Okay, John and then Chris, all in favor?
Ish, bye.
All's eye.
Groden eye.
Mark's eye.
And Groden eye. So just so you know, I'm actually hosting a Zoom meeting and Ed's gonna join for the first item, which is actually number two on the list here, and so we'll take, what do you want, five minutes?
Yes.
Sure.
Please.
And now be patient with me, so I'm hoping I'll be able to get everybody back in. All right, thanks. Bye-bye, everybody.
Bye, thank you.